This conference will now be recorded.
We're going to get this meeting started, call this to order, and the first meeting, if everyone please stand and remain standing. We'll start with the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which this stands right here. The Honorable Judge Justice Crowell.
Mr. Caldwell, I see you're back there, sir. Would you go out and do an indication for us?
How much?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lord. We thank you for bringing everybody here this evening. We pray that everything done there, Lord, will be in accordance with those plans, and we pray that you will see everyone here on stage at the end of this evening. Thank you for everything. We love you, we praise you, we worship you, and the greatest prayer to you is holy and precious.
If you would, please, just make sure your mom is out here, or your neighbor's gonna pass away. Thank you very much. Please be seated. At this time, I would like to have the board members, if they have a conflict of interest, at least let us know now, and they take this on the agenda. And everybody, please, check your phones, and all your electronic devices, and no surprises or notifications. We'll check them out later. Because we have so many people here, just please be mindful, if you're speaking, if you need to have an conversation, do the following. Everybody, first, hold on, or you can kill whoever's online with microphones. Also, we're creating hot air every time we speak, so. But everybody, we're, I'm just, can't say enough about love. Unmute. You ready? All right, so we're going right down the line here. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda as it is. Have a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All righty. Next up is a consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the special meetings and the regular meetings we had from 5:09 and 5:18. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Is there a doubt? All right, next coming up is the consideration of the special use permit for 320 Star Hill Drive. Before we go, there are some, some legal issues about this, which I want to make sure everybody's aware of, because this is sort of a quasi judicial thing. There are certain procedures that we have to do a certain way. Everybody that signed up here to speak, what we're going to do here in a minute, is everybody will get their three minutes, but I want everybody to please be, you know, mindful of your three minutes. We got a little thing over there to be able to speak, so that way we'll be considerate of everybody. We can get everybody in here, and everybody can have their, their three minutes of time to tell their view. Now, if somebody said something that you already agree with, rather than repeat that, just say, hey, I agree with them. And so what we'll do is, everybody who has signed up will get you to stand up to be sworn in to speak. Is that correct? You'll probably hear me going over to the Lord to make sure I'm getting the right advice, to make sure we're proceeding this as professionally as well. And please remember, we're all neighbors here, and that everybody deserves the respect and the dignity, you know, to, to be addressed that way, thusly, even everybody. That's the people who are presenting this plan. They've got every right to do that. You've got every right to have your opinion, so please just be respectful and mindful of that, and that's all I ask. So if you have signed up on this sheet to speak, I will need you to stand now, and you will be sworn in to testify for your opinions. As well as the applicant. All right, thank you. So Zach, I'll let you start off the presentation.
All right, so we're going to read from the memo. The town of Cape Codaret has received a special use permit application for 320 Star Hill Drive for the construction of 22 townhomes and 44 parking spaces. The proposed development is on a 4.36 acre lot located at the southwest corner of Pine Lake Road and Star Hill Drive and the Star Hill Drive community. The property is located in the R-30 residential zoning district. The property is bordered on all sides by property that is owned R-30 residential. The property is bordered to the north by vacant properties in an existing four-unit condo development. The property is bordered by Star Hill Golf Course to the west. The Star Hill Golf Course property wraps around the property to the south and east. The closest developed residential property to the proposed townhouse development is a single-family detached dwelling located at 336 Star Hill Drive. And then I'll read the planning board's statement of consistency. The planning board determined at their June 7, 2022, meeting that the proposed special use permit for 320 Star Hill Drive was inconsistent with the town's 2007 Camelandies plan and with the town's recently adopted 2022 comprehensive Camelandies plan. As the 2022 comprehensive Camelandies plan has not yet been approved by the state or the Coastal Resources Commission, both planning documents were referenced to ensure compliance with 160D-501 plans. The planning board found that this proposed special use permit was inconsistent with Section 4.2.2 Land Use Compatibility of the Town's 2007 Camelandies Plan, and specifically inconsistent with section, or with Policy 10, which is Cape Codaret will maintain residential areas that are used exclusively for detached, stick-built, single-family dwellings. The planning board also found that the proposed special use permit for 320 Star Hill Drive was inconsistent with Section 5.1 Future Land Use Categories of the Town's recently adopted 2022 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Section 5.1 Future Land Use Categories. The future land use categories listed below provide guidance for desired land use development and legislative considerations such as a rezoning or special use permit. The categories define suitable development patterns for all portions of the town's corporate limits and are as follows. And the specific section that was referenced was single-family residential. These areas are intended to remain as single-family residential structures to include still-stick-built, modular, manufactured, and other types as permitted by building code. Many neighborhoods in this category are already existing. By maintaining the lower-density residential areas south of Highway 24, there is less risk of flood damage. Additionally, residential areas in the northeast around the golf course preserve natural foliage. The planning board voted unanimously to approve a statement of consistency that indicated that the proposed special use permit for 320 Star Hill Drive is inconsistent with the town's 2007 Camelandies plan and 2022 Comprehensive Camelandies plan. And then the staff report and recommendation. The provided special use permit application meets the application requirement set forth in Section 8.19.2 of the town's unified development ordinance. Staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners proceed with consideration of the special use permit for 320 Star Hill Drive. The Board of Commissioners should carefully consider each of the eight standards contained within Section 8.19.3 consideration. And the Board of Commissioners should refer to those in determining their findings of fact. The special use permit application must meet all eight findings of fact in order to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. The requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving or denying the special use permit application for 320 Star Hill Drive. The Board will need to vote on whether the proposed special use permit meets each of the following factors. Number one, the proposed special use conforms to the character of the neighborhood, considering the location, type, and height of buildings or structures, and the type and extent of landscaping on the site. Number two, the proposed use will not cause undue traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard. Number three, the proposed use will have the ability to obtain adequate connections to water, sewer, wastewater, drainage, electric, and others as required. Number four, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. Number five, the establishment of the proposed use shall not impede the orderly development and improvement of surrounding property. Number six, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Number seven, the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. And number eight, the proposed use is consistent with the officially adopted plans and policies of the town. And the two attachments that were included in the packet were the special use permit application for 320 Star Hill Drive, as well as the site notice postings and mailings that went out.
That's it?
Okay, do we hear from the applicant? Okay, if the applicant, can we please come up to the podium? And address the board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. McLean.
You should have sold popcorn tonight. I want to start by apologizing to this group. You know, we, we think we have a good product for the town. Our intent was never to get everybody stirred up like this. So I'd like to go through it, because I don't think anybody really understands what we're trying to produce. So I do have, who's in charge of the PowerPoint? You've got the slides? Yeah, yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the way you started this meeting, because it's a small town. I recognize a lot of you. I don't want to see you in public and have bad feelings about you, and I certainly don't. I appreciate you starting the meeting that way, and I will get started with the PowerPoint. Zach, maybe I'll get you to run it. Where is the, the next button? All right, I'm going to start here. It was quite a delay. First of all, my name's Bubba McLean. I'm from the area. I'm one of the three partners. Paul Murray is another member or partner. Paul's been here for decades. And then our third partner is Ashley Melton. He is a builder on the island. He's from Onslow County, although he doesn't like to tell people that. And he's been building for 10 or 15 years, primarily in Cardaret County and Onslow County. So this idea originated with our builder partner. He gets approached, has been approached for the past five or 10 years with people wanting smaller homes, less maintenance, smaller yards. So from that, we started looking for different pieces of property. We identified two pieces of property that we felt like fit the character of the neighborhood, because they were either contiguous or across the street from existing condominiums. When we looked at those pieces, our other partner, Paul, either owned the piece outright or owned a vested interest in it. So we have not gotten any direction from the town of Cape Codaret regarding townhomes. We went to the planning board. The planning board was not in a position at that time to give us any direction regarding townhomes. So given no direction from the town of Cape Codaret, we planned for the maximum number of units that the property could handle in an R-30 zoning. We did that by hiring civil engineer, soil scientist, land surveyor. We consulted the health department. We consulted the utility providers, and we also consulted the Department of Transportation. So once we got this plan together, really our only option was the special use permit. So that's where we are today. So once we applied, the town is legally required to post the meeting, which they did. A lot of the signs went up in Star Hill North, and for whatever reason, that created a kind of a firestorm on social media. And I'm a little bit surprised at some of the inaccurate posts and personal attacks, and so I felt the need to respond. So I did, and the partners listed our phone numbers, said, call us if you have any questions. I think I had two or three people call me, which I appreciated. One of the residents that's supposed to be here tonight offered their home to have a meeting in. I thought it was a great way to get information out. Once we learned a little bit more about the nature of these proceedings and that they are somewhat judicial, they canceled, which I totally understand. And so that's where we are now. I do feel the need to respond to some inaccurate posts. One of them, by a planning board member, said that as it is currently zoned, only one single-family home can be built on the entire lot. That's not correct. It's a four-acre tract. It could be subdivided into 20,000 square foot lots. Additionally, somebody else had the idea that we were getting government kickbacks or having government subsidized housing. That's not true. And another one today. This parcel does not violate any of the Star Hill Homeowners Association covenants, because it is not and has never been included in the original covenants. So I want to briefly speak about the petition that you're going to receive tonight. It's going to sound kind of odd, but I think it's great that there's so much community involvement. I think it's fantastic. I do want to address, I have friends that live in Star Hill. A couple people were asked to sign the petition because we were filling in wetlands, and they opposed that. We are not touching wetlands. That's a big issue, and we're not getting near the wetlands. The petition references future development in undeveloped land. And just because the lot across from you is wooded, doesn't mean it's going to stay that way. We still have the right to develop property within reason and within your town ordinances. The increase in traffic, absolutely, this will increase traffic in Star Hill. And I'll address this more a little bit later. So the flooding concern is a concern for all of us. Anytime you disturb more than one acre of land, you have to get a state-approved stormwater plan. So whether we develop this as townhomes or single-family detached dwellings, we will have to get an estate-approved stormwater plan. It's just that simple. There's no way around it. It says we're deviating from the land use plan. Your land use plan specifically mentions increasing housing options, and that's what we're trying to do. Displacement of wildlife. I'm assuming that everyone that signed the petition lives in a home in Star Hill, and they displaced wildlife when they built their homes, so I don't know how it's any different for us. We do have a 250-square-mile national forest right behind town that I'm sure the animals couldn't make their way to. Schools, it's interesting. I do recognize a lot of names on the social media posts, and I recognize a lot of people out here that have kids in our schools. And we think that's fantastic. The Board of Education is keenly aware of the growth at this end of the county, and we've allocated money to address that. Now, I want to mention this too, because there seemed to be some confusion on this as well. Our target market is not young families. Does that mean we would not sell to young families? Absolutely not. That's called discrimination. So we're targeting this market based on price, location, number of bedrooms, some of the upgrades that we plan on putting in. So that's how you target a market, but again, if a young family wants to move into a two-bedroom home with five kids, we would sell it to them. So again, I'm not real sure how to use this PowerPoint, but the, the concept that we have is broken roof lines, attractive accents, whether it's stone or another hard surface, hardy siding, solid surface countertops, covered entrances. So it's something that, you know, this is not a vinyl clad box that we're trying to build. Now, I'm going to say right now, this is not what we're building. We're not going to spend any more money on plans until we know it's approved, but this is the concept. And we're not looking for feedback on color and anything like that right now. This is just the, the concept of what we're trying to do. So tonight, I'm going to present the facts of our case. Again, it sounds weird, but I appreciate how involved everybody are, is in this. But since this is somewhat of a quasi judicial hearing, if there are inaccurate statements, I will immediately and respectfully refute them, which I expect them to do if I make an accurate statement. Your decision legally has to be based on the eight standards. And I hope you can separate that from any emotional plea that you would hear tonight. So let's see. All right, so the eight standards, Zach just went over these. I'll quickly go through them. The project has to conform to the neighborhood. It won't cause undue traffic. Number three, we have to be able to hook up two utilities. It shall not be noxious or offensive. It's got to, can't impede the orderly development of the property surrounding. It cannot be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare. Can't injure the value of the adjoining or abutting property. And it's got to be consistent with your adopted town plans. So number one, so this is obviously the track that we're talking about. This is a 4.4-acre tract. It's owned by Mr. Murray. It's right across the street from existing condominiums that have been there for almost 50 years. They were built in '73 or '74. It's primarily buffered, and I have, I don't know if this will work. You can't see it that well. It's primarily buffered by undeveloped parcels. There is one on the east side in the middle. It's a residence. I've not spoken to those folks. But I have spoken to a lot of the vacant landowners around there, eight of them, to be exact, and no objections to what we're proposing. We've met all R-30 zoning requirements, and I'll just, this, this is not a fact. I'm just going to tell you my experience. I play a lot of golf, other golf courses. The majority of golf courses I go to have big, single-family homes, and they have townhomes or apartments. So this is not some radical idea. There are housing options on a lot of the golf courses that I go to. Additionally, there, you don't have any landscaping requirements in R-30 right now. If I were neighboring this, I would certainly expect something to be done. And so we got a landscape architect to demonstrate. Anyway, we got a landscape architect to demonstrate what buffering would look like. Traffic concerns. Again, traffic will absolutely increase, just like it does with any development. This project is in a 25 mile an hour zone. Our property is contiguous with a four-way stop intersection. Our driveway would be within 50 to 100 feet. We have a 50-foot wide ingress and egress, which is plenty. We have a clear line of sight to the intersection and also to the stop sign of Star Hill Drive. Utility connections, no concerns whatsoever. The water would be supplied by West Cardaret Water Corporation. The sewer would be a Cardaret County Health Department-approved system. The electric would come from Cardaret Craven EMC. And the stormwater, again, would be a state-approved stormwater plan. And at this point, we don't know if that's one and a half inches, two inches, or even three and a half inches that they would want us to capture. But whatever it is, we're required to do that. We would. So the fourth standard says that our project will be noxious, will not be noxious or offensive. And, you know, these are homes. Somebody who, I guess uses an alias, said that, I said that these homes would be just like every other home in Star Hill. What I said was, these homes are single-family dwellings. They will be just like every other home as far as not being noxious or offensive. So, and again, most people didn't even know that we already had two sets of condominiums in Star Hill for 50 years. Impede the development and improvement of the surrounding property. So there's actually 10 surrounding parcels that are undeveloped. I have spoken to nine of the owners of those parcels. Eight of the people had no objections whatsoever. One of the ladies is here tonight gathering information, which I think is a brilliant idea. And then the 10th owner I have not spoken to. But again, you know, the majority of people don't see this as impeding the development on their lots. The sixth element is, is this detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare? Well, again, these are homes. You know, there's nothing that's going to endanger the, the public from them. Traffic will absolutely increase. And whether we do townhomes or whether we do single-family detached, and I don't know how many people have been here, I know Jeff Waters would have been here. When Star Hill North was built, there was a huge outcry for the increase in traffic. And now, when I look, it seems like most of the complaints about traffic are coming from Star Hill North folks. So those 120 lots that were developed created more traffic. The 30 lots that, Arden Oaks was developed, that created more traffic. Just like the 13-acre tract on Star Hill Drive will create more traffic. There's a 12-acre ETJ piece on Star Hill Drive that'll create more traffic. There's an 18-acre piece on Channelview that'll create more traffic. And there's 50-plus acres in the triangle that will create more traffic. So I don't feel like we should be penalized after everybody has moved into their little space of the earth. Also, I mentioned again, this is not government subsidized housing. I try to keep the government as far out of my life as I can, so this is not, we're not getting government credits or anything like that. Your seventh element says that this will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. And I don't need to tell you, but Star Hill prices are at the highest they have ever been. And that is with two existing condominium complexes. So newer, no disrespect to the units, they're 50 years old. They're not affecting the value. We don't feel like, you know, attractive new townhomes will hurt the value either. Now, your standard, your words, use adjoining and abutting. So technically, the only adjoining or abutting property owner is Star Hill Golf Course. Now, look, we totally recognize what you're, what you mean by that. So again, we contacted as many people as we could, and eight of those adjoining 14 properties have no objection to the, to the project. But again, your language uses adjoining or abutting. So in 2021, average home price in Star Hill North, $395,365. Average home price in the rest of Star Hill, $391,000. Our target price is in the low 300s. And there were some posts saying that they thought we were going to sell these for $200,000. Well, this is my living. This is how I make my living, so we're not planning on losing money on the project. There are townhomes off of Old Church Road, up Highway 58, that are square, vinyl-sided, two or three-bedroom homes. They're selling for $220,000, they have sold, excuse me, for $225,000 and $250,000, and I think there's planned to be 40 of those. So we think we have a better product, better built, hardy siding, a better location on the golf course. Number eight, standard is consistent with adopted plans and policies. And again, both your current and former land use plans references specifically the increased housing options, including multifamily units and options for seniors. Townhomes are defined as single-family dwellings. Townhomes are allowed in residential zoning. And, you know, all of the surrounding municipalities have townhome language. Emerald Isle does, Cedar Point does, Swansboro does, the county does. So again, with no direction from the town, all we're asking for is help. What kind of requirements do you want? And I personally don't think it's right or fair for you to turn this project down without giving us any direction. Of course, it's totally your prerogative, but imagine trying to create a project with no rules. And you get down the road and then you, you have to react to those. So if you don't approve it, I would ask that you table it until you get, or give us a little bit more direction. So that's it for this project, are there any questions? That's not work.
Do you want to go back to that? I can have Zach sort it out.
My answer.
Family who can't, because of the nature, the only people that are going to be able to speak are the ones that signed up. That have been sworn in to speak due to the judicial aspect of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. We don't want you to hold by the technologies.
And again, I do want everybody to understand, with no direction, we put as many units as we could on there regarding setbacks, stormwater retention, this type sewer system we wanted to use. So look, if you come back and say, you know, this piece will only handle 18, then we'll reconfigure and see if it makes work, it makes sense for us. But again, this is total conception. And we own property surrounding this project. Certainly don't want to devalue our property, and we certainly don't want to devalue yours, so. But that, that's the concept. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Correct. Correct, which, and I'd have to ask the engineer, we realize that's probably not enough. It would make a lot of sense if I was in your position to make it two and a half. So somebody's going to have a visitor at some point. So yes, but your, your R30 zoning is what we used. So yes, two, I think there might be a little bit more, but we recognize that, and look, we might have to eat one of the, the townhomes to increase parking, so. No, sir, no, sir, absolutely not. Parking? Well, well, yes, I mean, you, you tell me, if you want us to have two and a half units, three parking spaces, then we have to go back to the drawing board and, and see if that works. Yeah, but, but no, it's, it's a great point. We would expect to provide parking for guests, yes. And, and right now, I don't know if you've been to some of the other condo units, but they kind of fit them in, so it works for them. But, yeah, and, and that's not being disrespectful, it's just the way they were designed, so. But yes, we could increase parking. Interestingly, and is it okay for me to?
Did you sign in to speak, sir? Okay.
So if somebody asked about garages, we, we would have said that it's a balance between putting a master bedroom on the first floor and a garage. This concept, because it is located so close to the golf course, we had the idea of making golf cart garages and storage. But if they're not 18 feet long, we can't market them as garages. But that, that's the concept for this property. Yes, sir.
Or recap, you, you mentioned you had reached out to all adjoining property owners and had no objections, could you clarify that?
No, sir, I, I didn't say I reached out to all of them, I did reach out to nine of the 10. Eight of them had no objections, and one lady that owns one of the vacant lots is here tonight to collect more information.
Okay, so eight out of
Eight out of 10, correct.
As, at this point.
Yes, sir.
One more maybe silly question for us people that don't know. Will this proposed townhomes have its own HOA?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir, so, and that's a very good point, and that's why we've hired the attorney to help us start drafting that. Townhomes and condominiums look the same, the difference is the ownership, and so and so it depends on how much land we want to give them out the back or the front, and how much we want the HOA to take. Because if it were me and if my parents were looking for a townhome, I wouldn't want them to have to worry about cutting grass. So, but yes, we'll have HOA restrictions on parking boats and, you know, who, who knows, so yes. Thank you. Yes, sir. Where do you put your ball, on the right-hand side? Yes, sir, that, that is number five, Home of Sands. Yes, sir. So the green is here.
Yes.
And then you go across the street to the next one.
Go to the right corner.
Yes, sir.
Right there, okay, we're seeing Augustine from there.
St. Augustine, Star Hill North, yes, sir, it's over here. Yes, sir.
Mark, please.
You can have it back, believe me.
I understand you have eight people surrounding property owners, say they were, had no objection.
Yes, sir.
Is that documented?
I could probably document it tonight. No, to be clear, though, because your standard, that's what's just developed.
Would y'all please, please, please keep it down, we're trying, we have a commissioner asking a question. Because he is the only adjacent.
Your attorney would have to answer that.
I'm asking.
Your language does refer to adjoining and abutting. But, but again, we're, we're not trying to split hairs, we know what the
The golf course.
Right, right. Get the information now. Yes, sir.
Me, my background is the document.
Right. So, yeah, good, great point, so I could very easily get a list of the properties and I'm happy to point them out. Again, I would refer to your attorney to define what adjoining or abutting is. But we used this track across the street, this track across the street, this track across the street, this track that's across Star Hill Property, this track, this track, and these three tracks. Because the standard, the clause about
So, could y'all please keep it down while the man's talking, please?
So again, I'm using the words from, from your standard to address that. Again, technically, it's Star Hill, and I think the directors will speak on their position later, but, but again, I know what the essence of what you're trying to get at was with surrounding properties. Any other questions?
And just to remind the board, you'll be voting on each one of these eight, so as we do with our normal voting procedure, we'll do it where everybody has a chance for discussion on each one of these eight. So if there's any more questions, they can bring them up at that point as well.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Voting on each individual one, does one disqualify the entire project?
I think so. I think so, yes.
What, what I would suggest is, I mean, obviously the applicants testified, the other folks will have to testify, and then after that, we'd do a motion on each one and then go to discussion in each one. Yes, sir. And after the other folks have gone, the applicant would begin an opportunity to rebut anything he would like to rebut.
Any more questions about the procedure, especially from commissioners? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I do, I do want to remind everybody, please, because, because if, if you start having little conversations, they start roaring and, and we can't hear. And here again, we want to make sure that the right decision is made and that all these commissioners have that information and it is not muddled, okay? And the same thing when you're speaking, these people who are signed up, get your plea, please be respectful of the people who are speaking, whether you agree with them or not. Let them speak their piece, they've got three minutes, please be mindful of our little light over there. And when your three minutes is up, please return to your seat and let the next person have their opportunity to speak, okay? All right, so we start now, everybody that was on here has been sworn in. So we'll start, start, just going right down the line, which is Dot Marsh. She's vertically challenged.
This gentleman has addressed some things, but not everything. He didn't, he's mentioned sewer. Does he have sewers, or do we have a septic system? He mentioned his sewer plan. We do not have the infrastructure for townhouses and condos. And he, I haven't had anything to do with any of this that he's talking about, I haven't seen the signs or anything. But he says that it's not fair for us to object to him. But it's not fair for him to come and try to change our total way of life and bring condos in where we've had a tranquil community of single-family homes without the excess traffic that we will get from the townhouses. The unit will cause extra traffic and crowding the schools, as he said. There is a request for special use, although it's not a special need. Attached, single-family housing is not wanted or needed here. He also didn't mention on whether it's going to be regulated or not. He didn't say, are they going to be sold to individuals and they, they going to take care of their own properties? Or will they manage these homes and do the landscaping, the taking care of the lawns and, and landscaping or not? I have not seen anything about whether it perks. If the units did not sell according to their plan, they might turn to renting. And the worst-case scenario is that it could lead to the lack of respect for the property and people being unable to pay their rent. In 2008, we prepared to sell our house and the market dropped. Our house lost more than 25%. And houses did not sell unless they were given away. And this could happen with these houses, these townhomes that they're building. Cape Carteret's Market is not a hot market. Often, houses do not sell until after they've been on the market for two years. That's very normal here. There has never been a market as hot as right now. And what will happen next with the current inflation and rising interest rates? I read an article June 4th, that what families dream to buy is a single-family home with a yard. And they are not buying the townhouses that some people think they should want. And also, these two properties have water on them. And the one on Taylor Ocean Road that he isn't involved with evidently, it leads out to the White Oak River. So I don't see any reason for people to come and tell us what we should have in our community when there's all kinds of empty property that isn't quite as nice, so they choose us to pick on.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. McLean, would you like to address?
Absolutely, I even brought my civil engineer with me. Dad, will you comment on the sewer system? Septic system, excuse me.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. McLean, if you would, come up so we can get you on. Just want you to be heard online, sir. And everybody, please, please.
John McLean, a professional engineer. I will design the sewer system. When we get approval to start, we have already checked the soil to see if it's suitable. It will be onsite wastewater treatment. It'll be designed by, by me and approved in the county. That's pretty much it.
Additionally, you know, the great thing about this country is we can choose to build, you know, what we want within reason. It doesn't matter if we rent them or sell them, we obviously have to pay for the project. So we are planning on selling them. If we did not sell them, one of the stipulations that was brought up, and I thought it was a great point, is people didn't want to be Airbnb or VRBO in these things, and, and that's not our intent. So we would more than likely, and I have to talk to my other partners, but more than likely put a clause in the HOA with a minimum renting period of a year or something to that effect. So we could easily address that. Stormwater, like I scuba dive, I fish, I swim, I'm in our waters all the time. The stormwater issue is addressed by the state, period. So they'll tell us if we're, it depends on how close we are to SA Waters, if we're going to retain an inch and a half, two inches, or as much as three and a half inches, so until we get further down the road. But, but we can handle all of that on these properties. So I hope that answers some of your questions.
All right, next up is Mr. Kim Corbin. Kim Corbin. Okay. All right, then we'll skip down Dale and Karen Lepp, and if I miss a pronunciation, please forgive me. Okay, well, come on up.
My name is Dale Lepp, I live at 402 Star Hill Drive. It's relatively close to my property. Although we have it set up in a trust, so one of our kids will get it eventually. The reason we settled here in this tranquil society is just that. 98% of the people are really good, 2%, you kind of wonder. But that's, that's human nature. It's beautiful. I know the livestock that comes in and out, we have deer, we have turtles, we have snakes. Those are all beneficial, we have birds, they eat insects. We have really an ecology system that, that's thriving, you can go to any one of these ponds and it's a rich thriving ecological system. And the septic system, you know, I'm kind of thinking, you know, I come from a different area in the United States and they would use an aerial system to sanitize the water, treat the water. Man, I can see trouble with this one. I've been a farmer, a soldier, and many other jobs, and I've only seen, when you take I've been a farmer, a soldier, and many other jobs, and I've only seen, when you take land and clearcut it with good intention, but when you do that, that water has to go somewhere. And as everyone knows, that small portion in between Fox Road washed out during Florence, and it caused a heck of a log jam. It's having one entrance to this place, that's almost suicidal. You've almost got to have two or three to eliminate traffic on every available road. Just say if there's a fire truck, an ambulance, police, EMT, somebody gets in, locks in, hits a car, and all of a sudden, you don't have an exit. You block everything. I don't think they really thoroughly thought out this plan. Like I said, I've been a farmer. The reason I got out of being farmer was it seemed like the system was against us. But I like to see at least everybody have an acre of land to take care of. I used to take care of 93. So blaming land is precious and giving it up so easily after I've worked so hard all my life. Like I said, I've been a service person. I've seen how the government goes. I've seen where ADA has been relaxed, 1992. They don't take care of the soldiers when they come back. It just makes you mad sometimes, furious. Is being contacted by anyone? The only person that's contacted me was the nice lady back there that signed the petition. And that's the only person. And I live real close. There's an acre lot, there's that stream in between the golf course, and then that three and a half acres.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McLean, do you want to respond?
I have absolutely no objections to anything. Mr. Lepp, I think it was said, again, stormwater is directed by the state. They'll tell us, we're prepared to handle one and a half to three and a half inches. I'm very glad you brought up the fire and EMS. We did talk to fire and EMS, and they said they've approved what's called a hammerhead entrance where you can pull in and then go left or right. But again, this is a conceptual drawing, and I think it was a very good point you made. We could potentially come out on Pine Lake Road, too, if it made sense to alleviate traffic or a bottleneck or whatever.
Next up is Jennifer Paris. Yeah, do you have one for Mr. McLean? He can have mine. Well, I may not have one either. I don't vote, all I do is. It's okay. I know my place. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Paris, and I live at 522 Coylewood Court. The question was posed that, or the statement was made, that my petition didn't do, didn't know why it was circulated. The reason is the whole process has had a lack of transparency regarding the special use permit, otherwise known as SUP, at 320 Star Hill Drive, Cape Carteret. Although the town of Cape Carteret did disclose more information on Sunday, June 12th, I have, in the past, asked questions, or a few days ago, asked questions and found that the minimal requirements for an SUP notice were met by the following: a small sign on the property in question, a notice in the paper, and four homes that, four homes were sent notices by mail that are in close proximity of the property in question. I found this inadequate and archaic for the large community of residents that this special use permit would affect. With the technology today, more could have been done so our community could have been aware of this special use permit, such as social media, emails, and even mail notices to our community. For this reason, I started the petition against the SUP, the special use permit, because it would negatively affect our whole community and residents, and they were, and most of them were unaware. I wanted to give a voice to Star Hill, Star Hill North, and surrounding communities that it would affect. At the recent planning board meeting of commissioners, the question was asked by a board member, "Why are y'all here? This doesn't affect you." That statement resonated with me because this SUP will affect all of Cape Carteret going forward. So I teamed up with my neighbors, Alex and Beba, with an online petition as well. The two were combined, and Alex created the heat map that y'all were looking at. These are the residents to show you that they are against the special permit, the SUP. The petition that I got together was as follows. It's a neighborhood petition against the proposition of new townhomes. Petitioned by Star Hill, Star Hill North, and surrounding communities to stop the issue of special use permit for 320 Star Hill Drive, Cape Carteret, 28584, for the construction of 22 townhomes in our 30 residential zoning district. For those, we were opposed to the permit altogether, but it would increase traffic. Okay, I understand.
I want to finish your statement.
I was just saying, it would increase traffic, limit drainage and flood issues, lowering the home values, and populating the schools if there were kids, and displacement of the wildlife. They are issues that are, that need to be addressed with this.
Thank you very much. Mr. McLean?
The SUP, the transparency, has nothing to do with developers. That's a town issue, so I don't have anything to object to.
Please refrain from comments like that.
Yeah, now that's the kind of comments that I'm trying to avoid tonight. We have done everything, we've done, boy, we've done everything that we were supposed to have done. We've approached the planning board, we approached the county administration, so we don't have anything to hide. Again, we live here. I'm not going to put my name on a product that's going to hurt this community. So again.
Ma'am, Doc, you've had your chance, okay, everybody? We've got a procedure, we're going to try to stick to it. Thank you. All right, next up is Sivio.
Everybody, please, so we can hear the man. Hello, everybody. And there is an interesting baloney from somebody who talked about this, this and that.
Chief Officer, civil, thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I've worked for the MRAI Realty for six, seven years, and I worked only in this area for 26 years. I know this area very well. You know, probably 80% of the you guys who is here. And I'm going to address about traffic. I live in Star Hill, 345. Two months ago, one of the speeding driver hit an electric post that is brand-new right now. Missed that, police department know that. And how many speeding tickets, police department know that? This and previous mayor with the previous chief, unbelievable. A valued house, well, it's going to drop down, for sure. Well, we have expression, I don't want this, first to clean your yard and come in my yard. Under word, please build a house, townhouse, in your property around your house, and please come in my house around me and build it. And you're going to see how it still looks that. Next thing, what is very interesting, I like a gentleman who talked first. The best thing is, we're going to do this, the state is going to do this. Argument, yes, this, 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 paper, after that, you're going to go. But maybe we, who knows? But let's do this and have permit. And after that, we're going to figure out that. We are almost four months with out-of-the-death road during to Florence. Somebody mentioned, police department can go EMC, fire department, and nothing changed, just to put another pipe temporarily. It's not with the rules what is required. People complain, but 45, 55 years, I'm older than this town. 45, 50 years, it's a different rules about size of the pipe. And right now, we're going to have another, you know what? Thank you very much, but somebody have four half-hour to talk, and I have not the three minutes. I must say something. Please, God, all this petition, vote and people who resident, vote for you guys. And if you not respect these two guys, these guys will not respect you. Just think about it. You're going to vote for these guys again? I don't know.
All right.
I'm not real sure how to address the speeding issue. Our project.
Please, please keep it down.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we don't have anything to do with speeding. I'm sorry that happened. There's a philosophy called NIMBY, N-I-M-B-Y, not in my backyard. This is my backyard. I'm from here. I'm at Star Hill all the time. We have property over there. If I had acreage near my home, I would put these up. I'm proud of what we're trying to build. Did you want to speak, sir? He said something about leaving town. I moved my family back from Charlotte, so we're not planning on going anywhere. And I'll say this from experience, the hollow threat of voting elected officials out, I know what your go-through, I know none of you want to be here. I hate when people use that we're going to vote you out of office because you're doing, whether they realize it or not, this town a service, so, thank you.
All right, next up is Susan Hall.
So everything I'm going to say is in this package. Do you mind if I move this? So I am the chair of the planning board, and I served on the steering committee for the new UDO. I also served with Beba on that steering committee. The first thing I want to, I want to rebut something, and I hope my time isn't starting when I'm doing a rebuttal. The planning board did not have the opportunity to offer you any type of guidance speakers. We were not informed that there was even of this project in the works. There is certain, there was certainly a lot of research, and it's unfortunate that that didn't happen that way. As far as currently. Only one lot, we were talking about my statement on Facebook, that lot is not subdivided yet, and as the law says, in accordance with the UDO, there can only be one residential development as of today, that is all that is able to be put on that lot unless something changes. And I believe that's why we're here for this special. I also want to say that it is up to the applicant to meet the burden of meeting the standard. The applicant must meet the burden of this, must meet the standard, and then also, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and they, then they must also meet any additional standards imposed by this board. So at a minimum, they must meet the standards in the, in the UDO. There is, this is, a special use permit is not intended to relieve an applicant of the burden of the standard. And simply, the applicant stating that they're meeting the standard is not sufficient. The burden rests squarely on the applicant to demonstrate that they do not, that they do in fact meet that standard. In the case of 320 Star Hill, I do not believe that they have met that standard yet. Regarding sewer and wastewater, they currently do not have a plan. They have a plan to make a plan, but they currently do not have a plan, which means that we don't know whether or not that standard has been met. I only have three minutes, I've got to talk really fast. Wow, I only have 15 seconds now, maybe somebody else will yield their time to me. The applicant relies on the, oh, you know, let me, in case I get stopped, I want to, I do want to say this. 12.4 in this, in the UDO, very clearly states that there is one dwelling per lot. It says, "Only one principal building and its customary accessory buildings may hereafter be erected on any residential lot." The applicant's plan for 320 is four separate structures consisting of four to eight dwellings each, and that is inconsistent with, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I probably did misspeak. We did not present this plan to the planning board. We went to the planning board meeting to get guidance from them. At that point, they couldn't define townhouses. I mean, they weren't able to give us direction at that time. So that's why my comment was made, that the best option that we had was to go to a special use permit. So that's what we did. But she's right, we did not formally introduce this plan to the planning board. As far as her comments online, I'll quote, "As it is currently zoned, only one single-family home can be built on the entire lot." That is inaccurate. What she just said is it could be a residential development. I agree with that, but that's not what her statement said. And I was not wanting to call her out specifically on that, I just wanted to point out all the misinformation. I feel like we've just demonstrated, we've met all of the standards. Sewer, we obviously have not put sewer in yet. We don't know if you're going to approve it. My father, who's been doing this for 40 or 50 years, has designed the system, so I know that it will work. But have we put it in? Have we submitted it to the state for approval, to the county for approval? No, and we won't unless you approve it. So again, if you don't think that you've got time to come up with requirements or guidance for us, I would ask that you table. But it just doesn't seem right that you would vote on something without giving us any information, any guidance. But it just doesn't seem right that you would vote on something without giving us any information, any guidance.
Uh, no, sir, she's, she said her, we've got a procedure we have to follow, sir. He reverted, we could go all night going back and forth, please, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna follow the procedure, okay? Some legal ramifications for things. So if, if this doesn't go for somebody particular way, and we allow it to get out of hand like that, then that can come back to haunt us in the court. And now next thing you know, we're, we're spending all the town's money on lawyers and stuff. So we're trying to give everybody's got their chance to speak. He's got his right as the developer to rebut it. Okay, so next up is Doug, is this Cowley?
I, I was just gonna say, as I come up, that the one thing is, everybody gets a chance, or Mr. McLean gets a chance to rebut. But most of the time, he's coming up here, the first two people, he didn't even rebut, he just made other statements, had nothing to do with what they said. He had his chance to speak, let us speak, but I don't understand why the chairman of the planning board can't ask another question when she's the chairman of the planning board.
She is, but.
Right?
Hold on a second.
Oh, you started it already?
Well, you gotta prebe on us, go ahead.
Okay, awesome. Hey, I'm Doug Cowley, I live at, uh, three twelve Bahia Lane in Star Hill North, I've been there since two thousand and seven, I'm an original homeowner. I wanna thank you for that opportunity to speak to you this evening. Had the opportunity to come here last week, sit on the planning board. Uh, sorry, it was my first one, but now I'll pay attention. Um, one of the things that was determined by the board is the board determined, as has been mentioned tonight, that this development is not consistent with our land use plan. At the beginning of the meeting, there were thirty-three people in attendance. Uh, I mention this because the minutes are not available yet on the webpage. Um, they're typically available within that week, but they're not available, so I'm gonna bring you up to speed on some of the things that were discussed. So we're thirty-three people there, uh, they asked for a show of hands for those for and against, twenty-nine were against. The four people that were for, that showed up to the planning board meeting all had a financial interest, uh, in the development. So let that sink in, or take, take a poll of hands tonight, I'd be good with that too. Um, of those, these are people that actually here, not people that, there's these eight people, or these nine people, or these ten people. If there's people to speak, bring them forward. Uh, but don't tell us how many there are unless we know that that's what was there. Okay, otherwise, it's just hearsay. It's just, well, I think this, or I thought that, were they there or not? If there's eight people that have adjoining lots that wanna speak, let them speak. Otherwise, what somebody else says about what they think about that lot is hearsay. Okay? Um, beyond that, I wanna thank Susan for her leadership on the board. Tonight's the first night I knew what her opinion was. I didn't know what her opinion was the night of the planning board. Um, she did a very good job of letting all sides speak and saying what they needed to say. Couple of things, and I'm kinda jumping around because we're speaking after somebody else. Again, there's, there's the eight criteria that something must be met, if any of them are not met, it is not, uh, it doesn't pass. Um, so I'm just gonna hit on a couple of those real quick. One of them, again, speaks to the character and location. Uh, if you look at the land use plan, it specifically references a single family home as stick-built detached. That isn't the land use plan, that's not me making that up, that's a fact. So please take a look at that. Um, the other thing was, they talked about traffic congestion, Mr. McLean even readily admits that that is a very major intersection. Um, I did the math, there's about a hundred and seventy or thereabouts homes that have to go through Pine Lake and Star Hill Drive. Nowhere else in Cape Carteret, is that the case? That is a single intersection that currently has a hundred and seventy homes going through it. And now we're going to add forty-four more parking places. So do the math there, that one, that one's not hard. The last thing I point out is, the last requirement of the eight is that the purp, the proposed use is consistent with the officially adopted plans and policies of the town. That's already been answered. Your planning board has looked at that, they have made a determination, you're the vote, they're just a recommendation. But your planning board has told you that it is not, it is not consistent.
Thank you, Mr. Cowley.
I don't know that I refer to that as a major intersection, twenty-four and fifty-eight is a major intersection. Um, so, so what I would tell you is, again, when I was coming along Star Hill North, that was all the talk, all the major traffic that's gonna be created. Any undeveloped lot in this town is going to increase traffic. Is that our fault for having this track that we're trying to develop? No. So that, that is up to the town to decide how to alleviate some of the traffic. But, um, again, four-way intersection, four-way stop intersection, twenty-five mile an hour zone. You know, our driveway fifty-foot wide, easy line of sight, you know, it will create traffic, absolutely. But, um, not unlike Star Hill North did, or any other development, Cape Carteret.
Next up is, uh, Ginger Gold.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live at, uh, one three six Pine Lake Road. And although my home is, is not joined by the, to the three twenty Star Hill location, it is joined via direct view. And therefore will be impacted by the proposed twenty-two townhomes. I've lived at this residence, uh, since two thousand and seven. And when my elderly mother and I, uh, closed on this property, we were provided the Star Hill Golf and Country Club Incorporated protective and restrictive covenants by our attorney, Richard Stanley. And we believe that our home investment was protected from multifamily housing, in this case, townhomes, by the covenants, which are clearly written as follows, and I quote, "No structure shall be erected, altered, placed, or permitted to remain on any building site on these lots other than one detached, single-family dwelling, not to exceed two and a half stories in height, exclusive of basements, and one detached structure not exceeding two stories in height to be used as a garage." Please note the word detached. It seems as though some want to, some want to define a townhome as a singly, single-family home. However, even if that is the correct definition, it is not a detached house. To build townhomes in this neighborhood would not only violate the covenants, but as explained by the planning board, it would negate the recent land use standards. In addition, the covenants promised Star Hill owners not only detached, single-family housing, but also to keep the natural beauty of the area. And I quote, "Therefore, in order to protect the owners of the building sites against improper use of surrounding building sites, and to preserve the natural and scenic beauty of the property," and it goes on in the covenants, and then it says, "designed to preserve the rustic beauty, natural attractiveness of the wooded areas, and in to encourage the erecting of attractive homes." The covenants for Star Hill are clear, this is a detached, single-residential housing community that promises natural and scenic beauty through wooded areas and rustic appearance. The covenants are consistent with established land use standards. Any decision outside of these documents would be a breach of trust and extremely problematic for this community, resulting in unintended consequences in this town. So therefore, please vote no to allowing townhouses to be built in Star Hill. Please vote no to the addition of the word townhouse, townhouse as a text amendment for special use in the R thirty residential zoning district. And please vote yes to further clarify housing as detached, single-family dwellings in the R three residential zoning district. So we do not have to revisit this issue in the future, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The only thing that I will say about our piece of property. Yeah, I, I appreciate everything you said, the only thing I'll say about this piece of property, there have never been any restrictive covenants put on this place, this, this piece of property. Just like there are several. Yes, there are no covenants. It's just, there's no covenants on this piece of property, just like there's not on another large tract next by. Star Hill, uh, the owner, the original owner, never accepted the covenants. So there are no covenants on this particular lot, I'm sure there are on this Gold's, there are on other undeveloped tracts. So just like there's different covenants in different neighborhoods, this tract has no restrictive covenants, period.
Please, please don't interrupt, I didn't interrupt you guys when y'all were speaking, please, please let the man have a speak, thank you, sir. Alright, Kevin Ganley. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
Good evening. I am the current, uh, longest member in Star Hill North Continuous Development. Uh, I live at the corner of Pine Lake and Star Hill. I am the only resident at that intersection. And my biggest concern, I, I, I hear everybody else's concerns, and I'll let them speak for themselves. My biggest concern is the runoff water. And I have witnessed for eighteen years now, storms, heavy rains in the summertime, and we get two, three inches. It, 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 in my gutter, or my ditch at the side collects a lot of it. And it gets to a point where it gets overcome by it, and it runs down to the other side of Pine Lake. And when that gets overcome, it runs into this piece of development that they wanna put the, uh, this piece of property in. And them saying that there's no effect on storm drainage, I witnessed that, so I question that. I imagine he's got a lot of good engineers that are going to, uh, tell you how they can correct this, or okay this. There were some good engineers that built some property drainage by the two churches, and that's still a nice one. That's, that's my statement.
Thanks, sir. Rules of procedure.
Uh, develop how you have standing.
I'm the chair of the planning board, and I served as the, uh, on the steering committee for the UDO, and for the land use program. And I'm probably switched to, uh, an expert on those documents, as you can get outside of this.
Mr. McLean, it's my opinion that that does not develop standing.
Here again, ladies and gentlemen, this is a, a special judiciary process, we're trying to make sure that we're, we're protecting the legal rights developer, and the town, and you as well. Trying to mesh all that together, I hope you understand that.
Uh, Mr. Ganley, I, I appreciate, um, you speaking, and, uh, and I agree with you, flooding is a concern. Um, I don't think that I said it would, we have no effect, but whatever we do will be approved by the state. So I, I'm not saying that we're not gonna create, anything that gets developed, well, any, with impervious surface will have some type of effect. What I'm saying is, anything that we do on either parcel will be approved by the state to collect one and a half, two or three and a half inches.
Alright, next up is Steve Peters.
Good evening. My name is Steve Peters, coincidentally. I actually came here to talk to you guys. Okay, all of the arguments back and forth, okay? Um, that's not how you're gonna make your decision. And I wanna talk to you a little bit about that, but first I give you a little bit of my background. I'm twenty-five years in state government, fifteen years in private industry. I've gone through the HR mode, I became a hospital administrator. My wife and I moved down here thirteen years ago, and I think we're kind of learning a little bit about the town and being a true southerner. But, um. One of the things that, uh. Well, let me, let me do it this way. A long time ago. On a planet four far away. I'm an author too, I wrote three novels and screenplays, and I do that now. But getting back to you guys. Um, there was this planet, we'll call it, um, let's call it Bahia, okay? And, um, I was on that planet, okay? In a job, uh, called the president of the HOA. Now, mind you, the only job I've ever known that was worse than that job is your job. Because you have to do this now, okay, you have to go through this, it's nice to see young people going through it. But I'm here to tell you this. Don't make this decision in any kind of covert manner. Make sure that you've got all the facts down, okay? And then publicly explain your position. My wife and I just got back from seeing the Western Parks, you know, Yosemite and, you know, Yellowstone, et cetera. I came back and I saw these funny little signs in front of the lot, okay, handmade, alright? So I stopped and I read them, and I called the town, they told me what was going on. And then the next day, okay, you had, uh, the signs up that you have up now, which is clearly from the, from the town. Don't let that happen, guys. That's your job, okay? Be transparent. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Well, I don't have a name to this, but I have Star Hill Golf. I assume that is you, Mrs. Hollis. Are you also the restaurant and the, I can't read this next one. Manatee Investments, are you doing all three?
Yes, at, one at a time.
Okay.
Alright, I am speaking as the president of Star Hill Golf Club of Cape Carteret NC Inc. Now that's a North Carolina S corporation, owned by shareholders. It's run by a board of directors who are elected and ratified by the shareholders. And the corporation is the adjacent property owner that has been named in this application. And I have consulted the directors of the corporation, and they have all told me to inform you that Star Hill is in favor of this project as the neighbor. We welcome new people, as we have welcomed all of you, all of you. We, uh, started Star Hill in nineteen sixty-five. I came to work here full-time in nineteen sixty-nine. And for some sins in a past life, I've been the president of Star Hill since nineteen eighty-six, when my father died. Now, after nineteen seventy-eight, when one of the three original partners of Star Hill died, the corporation divested itself of all the property, subdivided lots in mapped subdivisions, which were protected by restrictive covenants. Unsubdivided chunks of property were given out to the heirs of the families. And this property is one of them, it's never had covenants on it. And as the town attorney will explain if asked, a map is recorded, a subdivision map is recorded, this is the procedure. Restrictive covenants are recorded, applying to that specific map and subdivision, am I correct? Thank you. Not every piece of property in the Star Hill neighborhood. of property in the Star Hill neighborhood has protective and restrictive covenants on it. Okay, now, Star Hill built condominiums prior to there being any zoning in Cape Carteret. Started in 1973. And I'm sure some of the folks here don't know or care that there are existing condominiums in town. And guess what? They're in the R-30 zone. But that's the truth. And I'm, I'm sure if anybody cares to research it, they will discover that's the truth. But the bottom line is Star Hill welcomes new residents. We want them. We want them to play golf. Thank you.
No comment. Next up is, you can just stand up there. You've got two more to go. Save some time. Is Bud WB McLean Restaurant?
Residuary Trust. WB McLean Residuary Trust. And
Sorry, I just can't.
I know. It was, it was a little space for all of it. Anyway, the William B. McLean Residuary Trust still owns property adjacent to Star Hill. And the residuary trust welcomes all of you folks here. We have in the past, we will in the future, we will welcome new people. We have no objection and we welcome this. Okay. Manatee Investments Limited Partnership.
Hang on, starting up three minutes. Mr. McLean, did you want to say anything? Okay, now.
All right.
Manatee Investments.
All right. Manatee Investments Limited Partnership was started by my late husband and me in 2012 as part of an estate plan, hoping to leave something to our children. Now, we own property. We own vacant lots that are subdivided and, and subjected to restrictive covenants at Star Hill in the neighborhoods. And we also own lots on Taylor and Ocean Road. We welcome both of these projects. We have no problems. Two of the lots that did not go into Manatee, we gave to our children. And they are right next door to the proposed project at Star Hill. Both of my children wrote letters to the town, which I hope will be included. I don't know if all the owners next to this wrote letters welcoming the project, but I hope you'll consider that and that they will be read into the record. My children elected not to come. My son is in a power chair. He's a quadriplegic. Something like this is very hard on him physically. So I hope you'll forgive his absence. But they both welcome these projects. We need places. I would myself love to live in a place where I didn't have to pay to mow the grass, fix the roof, see to all the repairs. And I welcome new people and hope they play golf.
All right, last but not least, Carrie Reed. Carrie Reed. Yes.
Not much of a public speaker. I live in 336 Star Hill Drive and I am a renter. My landlord was here, but they had to leave. And he was not contacted. So where I live does, but immediately to the property that the townhomes actually encompass my current home. Traffic is horrendous. And I mean, the, Sylvia didn't mention that the car that ran into the electric pole almost ran into his house. I just can't imagine it being much worse. And Mr. Kevin, he mentioned the stormwater runoff. It will absolutely run directly into the ditch behind my home where we will now begin to have stormwater issues. I'd like to give the rest of my time to Susan.
Okay, so real quick, the applicant references the existing condominiums across the street as conforming to the character. However, those are non-conforming uses and cannot be used to meet the burden of character of the neighborhood. I'm, uh, R-30 is the lowest density zoning district in the town of Cape Carteret. This plan represents the highest density development in the history of this town. And that, I hope you'll consider that. Townhomes are zero lot line residential dwellings. That means that the structure comes up to or very near the edge of the property line. Zero lot line structures are not permitted in the residential zoning district. They are confined to the B-10, B-20, and B-30 zoning districts only. Oh, I still have almost two minutes. Um, the table of permitted uses calls out duplexes and multifamily dwellings in, only in the, in the multifamily, R-10 multifamily residential zoning district, um, which really, which indicates that the spirit of, of the, um, the UDO is that single family is one dwelling unit per lot, as it says in 12.2, or 12.4, rather. Um, I crossed out all this stuff so I wouldn't. The project would significantly alter the character of the neighborhood and is not harmonious with the surrounding properties as designed. It is in sharp contrast to the existing, the existing properties. I mentioned before in the letter of consistency, it is inconsistent with the Camel Land Use Plan that all, in Cape Carteret, this is a quote, Cape Carteret will maintain residential areas that are lose exclusively for detached stick-built homes. The future land use, uh, map calls out exactly where that medium density should be directed and it is not in the R-30 zoning district. Although their plans are very fluid right now, they really have, they really need to have a, a, a plan that states that they are meeting the existing standard. And the, although we saw a lot of different conflicting plans, the fact is that they're not meeting 12.2.10 either.
All right, that's everybody.
The only thing that I'll address again is the stormwater issue. There is a stormwater issue over there. Our project maintains our stormwater. I hope you're not holding us to account for everyone else's stormwater that currently exists. This project will handle our stormwater by a state-approved plan. So.
All right. So next up, I think we have the vote correct? So we need to go down, pull these up. All right. So the number one to consider is the proposed special use concerns to the character in the neighborhood, considering the location, type and height of buildings or structure and the type and extent of landscaping on the site.
Mayor, I've got one thing that I would like to insert before we start the vote. I personally need more time to digest all that we have been hit with tonight. If we are forced to vote on this, I'm afraid I'll have to abstain on every single one. I cannot, with all that we've had to digest, it's not fair to ask this board to vote on this tonight. We have 65 days by law. Is that correct, Attorney DeSims?
The UDO says the decision has to be made within 65.
65 days. So I would like to make a motion to table the vote until the next Board of Commissioners meeting to give commissioners the time to study all of this that we've been hit with tonight. It's only fair to everybody involved.
Where does the 65 days begin? Does that begin tonight?
Yes, the review period says the Board of Commissioners shall take action, which is approve, deny, or approve with conditions, within 65 days of the public hearing, which is tonight. I'll, I'll just add that should the Board of Commissioners fail to act on the special use permit application with the prescribed period, the application shall be considered approved. So it'd be, it would be approved if you don't come back within 65 days. I just want to make sure that you and the public.
Attorney DeSims, my motion's on, on the table to ta, uh, to table the vote until the next Board of Commissioners meeting, which will be less than 30 days.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any more discussion on, okay, all in favor? All opposed? All right. So that is table to July.
The, the date, Madam Clerk, for that meeting so that the public's aware of the, the next regular meeting.
Yes, July 11.
July 11.
July 11. We'll revisit. All right. So that one is business. Okay, next up. What? Yeah, go ahead. Representing Star Hill Golf Club, the William B. McLean Residential Trust, and the Manatee Investments again. All right. So you and Susan Hall are the only ones that have signed up to speak. If y'all would sign up and you decide to, yes, to swear in for this one as well. All right. And so we'll do just like the last one. Mr. McLean, you have the floor.
I will be a little quicker on this because we're addressing the same standards. Conforming to the character of the neighborhood will not cause undue traffic, ability to connect to utilities, will not be noxious or offensive, shall not impede orderly development, will not be detrimental to public health, will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, and it's consistent with the adopted plans. This track is. And actually, you can probably just leave it on this slide. It's fine. Yeah, thank you very much. So this is a 2.3 acre tract that is contiguous, contiguous with the existing condominiums from 1973. There are only two adjoining property owners, the Condominium Association and the golf course. There have been no public objections to this unless there's some tonight. And specifically from the homeowner association with the condominium. I've spoken to their secretary and she's not heard any objections to this project. We've met all the current R-30 zoning requirements, in which it's very difficult for this type project to meet the setbacks specifically. But we've met setbacks, parking, height, stormwater, sewer, and all that. Totally open and willing to put in landscaping buffering, if that's what's asked for. The traffic concern, again, if we put in nine homes or if we put in three or four residential, single detached homes, it will increase traffic. This is a 45 mile an hour zone. We're going to be 100 yards from the closest driveway, which is north. We've got a clear line of sight for 1,000 feet in both ways, 50 foot wide ingress and egress. And the DOT has given us a letter saying that if we keep it at nine, they will not require a turning lane, more than likely, and will not require a right in, right out. So that we would be able to pull in on both ways if we don't expand it from nine units. No issues with utility connections. We anticipate West Carteret providing the water. Sewer would be a Carteret County Health Department-approved system on-site. Electric, Carteret Craven, stormwater, as you've heard a few times tonight, is a state-approved stormwater system. Noxious or offensive, again, these are homes, you know, would be no more noxious or offensive than any other home in town. Impede the development and improvement of surrounding properties. There are only two unimproved properties adjacent to this, Star Hill. They don't have any plans to change their current use. And then across the street to the west is a national forest. I have not contacted them and don't plan on it. Detrimental to public health and safety, again, these are homes. They don't create a safety issue. The traffic, like I said, the DOT is not requiring a turning lane, clear line of sight. And these are not government subsidized housing, although I don't know that that contributes to public health. Injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. Again, both condominiums have been in place for almost 50 years. And we are seeing the highest values that Star Hill has ever seen for home sales. So we don't see a brand-new, well-built, overlooking the golf course, the pond, townhome injuring any property values. And the two undeveloped properties I'm talking about again are the golf course, no objection you heard tonight, and the national forest. We think this is consistent with your adopted plans and policies. You have stated that we need to increase our housing options for multifamily and for seniors. Again, townhomes are defined as single-family dwellings. They're allowed in residential zoning. And all the municipalities around us have already done this work. We're just asking you for some direction. Happy to discuss density buffering or anything else. And I'll just say this in closing. You know, we, we are incredibly fortunate to live here. We are somewhat insulated by the White Oak River, the national forest, and then Bog Sound. You know, we, we are incredibly fortunate to live here. We, we are somewhat insulated by the White Oak River, the National Forest, and then Bog Sound. However, people are moving here in record numbers, and they want housing options. You know, I think the product that we're presenting, it's not finished. We would like to work with you to come up with something that, that meets your requirements, but we don't know what those are yet. Development is inevitable. I remember, uh, Piggly Wiggly and Lowe's Foods coming in, and everybody raised cane because they didn't want to shop at Lowe's Foods. Everybody's at Lowe's Foods. Lowe's Hardware came in. Nobody wanted a big-box store, light pollution and all that. Now everybody shops at Lowe's Hardware. Candy Mart, Lowe's Gas Station, Starbucks, the newly-approved development at twenty-four and fifty-eight, Cedar Point, that is massive, and that will create traffic. And that will create people moving down here. We one-hundred percent support smart development. We live here, uh, we're invested in this community. We're not going to put something up that is going to devalue our property, or much less anybody else's property around it. Um. You know, a- all we're asking for is the opportunity to work with you. If you look at our plan and say twenty-two is too many. Fine, let us go back to the drawing board. We put the maximum number of houses on that project, we've put the maximum number of townhomes on this project. So tell us what the density is, tell us what the setbacks are, tell us what the stormwater requirements are. That's what we're asking for. I appreciate you table on the last one, because it is a lot of information, you know, to disseminate, uh, in a night. So, any questions about this project? Oh, yeah.
So again, um, we have a landscape architect offer, again, this is not our plan, this is a proposal. With a buffer from condos, um, to some degree buffer from Taylor Notion Road, and, um. You know, nice green space. You'll see here, we keep talking about stormwater, this is one of the retention ponds. Trade Wardville, uh, and more than likely, we need another, I think, house the state requires us to, uh, maintain.
Any questions on this project? Th- those are condominiums. We, we're proposing townhomes, which, again, if anybody looked at it, it's the same, yeah. Next door. Yes, sir, across the street. Both, both of ours are townhouses. And they are. Yes, sir. No, no, thank you, yeah. Any questions?
That's right, so the. Right, but all the documentation that Ascent has, um, submitted would be evidence that you could consider, just for the public's benefit, there cannot be. If, if the last one was tabled, there can be no deliberations. Amongst you that are outside of the public, so obviously between now and July eleventh, there can't be deliberations amongst one or two of you, even though that's not a core. It's a quasi-judicial procedure, so no deliberations at all until you're back in front of the public, and then you'll be able to. Like one of the gentlemen, I think, asked earlier, transparency, your decision-making public, or process will be open, in an open meeting, and everybody will be able to hear that. Uh, but one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Forgot, uh, are you going to provide documentation for the neighbors that have?
I, I can get signed statements, no drafts. That have not objected.
Prior to.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Once he obtains those letters from the neighbors. Is it okay for the, to email those to the commissioners, or do we have to wait till the next meeting?
The next meeting, that means being on the open public as well. Yes.
And I'm assuming that's on both projects.
Yes.
You, you heard from the golf course tonight, you still want one hard copy from the golf course?
Yes, any, any documentation that you can provide, uh, we.
Yes, sir.
Especially if it was presented, yeah, everything, all sides.
I think you've gotten a lot of negative.
Any more questions for Mr. McLean?
Thank you.
All right, we had, uh, there again, uh, two people, but four entities, uh, to speak first to Susan Hall.
I'll mention real quick before, uh, Susan Hall starts, um, the, in those in everybody's packet, so the statement of consistency, the same factors were utilized on this one. Deemed it inconsistent at the planning board meeting on June seventh, so just want to make sure that that was reflected for the record, and it's contained in everybody's packet. Recommendation being the same, you can consider it based on the eight factors, um, just want to make sure that was reflected, so I know we skipped over that.
Sorry, I forgot.
That's all good, just want to make sure it's mentioned, it was, it was found inconsistent, uh, at the planning board meeting, based on the. Section four dot two dot two of the two thousand seven Camelandies Plan, Policy Ten, and Section five dot one, Future Landies Categories of the twenty-twenty-two Complicits. Just want to make sure I mention that.
All right, you didn't start her time, did you? Okay.
Okay.
Are you ready?
I am. So, everything that I, um, am hoping will be entered into the record that I provided. Uh, is, is also, uh, in regard to this. I'm not going to go through it again for anybody. Um, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, but I do want to say that, uh, first, that, uh, it is one dwelling per lot. Uh, you cannot, y- you can't have it both ways. You can't have one dwelling per lot. Um, and then have twenty, or have nine dwellings per lot, but only use the setbacks for the overall lot. So you've either got, you've either got nine lots on there, or you've got one lot, you know, is it, you know, is it, um. A- as it addresses the standard, which the applicant is responsible for meeting the burden for. Uh, these are zero lot lines, and, uh, those zero lot lines don't meet the existing setbacks, uh, also doesn't meet, um, uh, the UDO. Uh, there is no wastewater plan for this either. There's a picture on there, but that's not a plan. Uh, the future land use map, uh, is used as a decision-making tool, uh, and this, um. Is not consistent with the, uh, land use map. Does that, is, that greenway across the front is ten feet, and the standard is twenty. Um, so that's, that's a note that I'd like to, uh, that I would like to make. I also want to say that had, had more opportunity been given, uh, because I'm not hearing anything about conditions. And, and that troubles me, because there's a lot of conditions that have to be met here. But I do want to say that this property has a much greater potential. To be a successful development. Uh, and, and others like it, right? We're not, we don't care about this alone, uh, on the planning board. The planning board cares about overall development of this town, and for that being consistent with the land use plan. So this property has a lot more potential to be successful, but we're not there yet. A lot of work has to be done to get there, and I've talked about that at the last couple of, uh, meetings, when I briefed the, the Board of Commissioners, uh, about the need to, uh, to do that. Um, and there's, and there are some things that we can do. One of them is simply extending the, um, the triangle area, which is a mixed-use area. Instead of halfway to the center of Taylor Notion, is to extend it all the way to the other side. Right? And then we would meet, he would be meeting the standard. So there's a lot of opportunities for making this successful, but we are not there. And a pre, a, a premature decision is, is, is just going to kind of blow it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually agree with most everything she said. I did have a question about the setback. She said we did not meet the R-thirty setbacks. Can I get clarification on that? You say we don't meet setback requirements?
You don't, you don't meet the R-thirty setbacks for a lot. For, for a single structure, so that, that the setbacks are, are designed by one lot, one dwelling per lot. You've got nine.
Right.
So, 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 and you're not meeting the setbacks. And simply put, if you've got a zero block on a structure, you're not meeting a ten-foot setback on the side.
Right.
And that's it. It's the simplest.
But, yeah, thank you. We, we actually do meet, um, the setbacks. We have ten feet on the side and forty feet from both front and back. So, so we do meet. Correct, correct. No, no, the, the end, the, the reason we could only get nine on this lot is because of the setbacks, because of your R-thirty setbacks. We have forty feet from the back of the property line, we have forty feet, uh, from the front of the property line, and more because of parking. And we have, uh, at least ten feet on the side, so we meet setbacks.
Just for the Africa, I, I think what Ms. Hall was saying is that the side between number one and number two. Is there, there's not going to be ten feet in between those when you separate the lots. That's, that's what she's referring to.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
From a building standpoint, right, but what she's saying is the, because in townhomes, you actually separate each.
Oh, well, yeah, we, we're not proposing to, I mean, o- ours will be contiguous in threes or fours or five, so we're not proposing to separate them, and I hope I'm following what you're saying. Um, so, so we're not proposing to separate them. Um, I, I will, I will tell you, um, I, I agree. I think this project, um, feels different than the other project. But I would also warn you, um, on planning other people's property, uh, without their input. Um, I think that's incredibly important, whatever you consider, to make sure that the landowner has some input on what your idea is. So, but I, I agree with everything else that Ms. Hall said.
All right, next up, uh, Star Hill Golf Club, Mrs. Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Uh, I would like to ask about the letters that were not read into the public record.
Holtz, we've received them, but only sworn testimony can be considered competent evidence out of quasi-judicial.
We also, we also had several emails as well.
I see. So what form, I've already told you, my son, it would be very difficult for him to attend a meeting, so is he not allowed?
Could he do it Zoom?
He is on Zoom, and he can't hear. He, he can't hear what's going on. Uh, he can see the picture, but he cannot see. He says it's very frustrating. Asking what's going on. So this might be a technical thing on this end, it might be on his end, but I did want to point it out. All right. I'm wearing my hat as Star Hill President. We welcome this project. We own the land, uh, in, in front of it, on the pond. We own the land, uh, to the east, where the entrance to Star Hill, the, the. Two-way entrance is. We built the condos on the other side, and we think this would be a, a wonderful project, uh. And we welcome people. I, I too have been to golf courses with my husband, who is a very enthusiastic golfer. And townhomes are a fact, and they're very popular, and, and there are a lot of golf courses have. We only have the very few condos we have before, because they were built before zoning was imposed. Single-family dwelling on the entire town. I'm not sure that's even legal, but we've never taken the town on or tried to. Uh, get, get attorneys and getting a big fight about that, but I think it's a, uh, only a recent, a recent. Development that the town, uh, put multifamily on property in the ETJ. And one of those came about as a result of. My first civics lesson, if, if you'll let me digress for just a moment, well, no, I'm running out of time. So, uh, Star Hill welcomes this project. We'd like to have more golfers, we'd like to have quality structures that offer people, uh. Options, options to live in this beautiful place, and again, Star Hill welcomes new residents. Thank you. Say it again.
Go ahead and start it.
All right. The William B. McLean Residuary Trust owns, uh, one parcel of property, the last thing left in the Residuary Trust in the Star Hill neighborhood. And it's located just on the other side of those existing condos. All right. We put in a four-bedroom septic system, we put in a sock pipe for drainage, we cleared out the ditch. Matter of fact, there's a deputy sheriff that lives on the other side of the Residuary Trust, and we went to him and asked if we could, uh, clean out the ditch for drainage. And he said, I'm on a deputy salary, as long as I don't have to pay for anything, it's fine with me. So, so the Residuary Trust cleared out that ditch for the benefit of him and our vacant lot, and that's fine. We're glad, we're glad to be a good neighbor. So, that lot is for sale. Uh, I'd be interested to know if a duplex or a townhome project could be put on that forty-some thousand, uh, square feet. Be interested to know. Uh, though, I, I really don't know if, if it could be, if it could happen. Now, on the other side of the Residuary Trust lot, Manatee Investment Zones, now I'm on another entity, uh, a couple of lots. I don't have any objection to this project. I welcome this project, and I have a financial interest in those lots, and I still don't have any objection, would welcome it. So, uh, these people would not do anything to harm me, they've already said that, or the neighbors. Uh, my children own the lot next to the Star Hill, uh, Drive Project. My sister owns the land across the street. It, it's, you know, they wouldn't do anything to hurt any family members, much less the folks here. Thank you.
All right, and that was everybody that had signed up. Have something you want to say? All right, so now we go through, just like we did with the other one. It's only eight.
Mayor, as, uh, with the, with the last, uh. Uh, last one, I will make the motion to table this one until the next meeting also.
Okay. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
At this time, if I may, just for a minute. I just want to, for the benefit of the audience and the applicant, I, I know how tempting it is to contact the commissioners about things that involve the town. But that's fine with normal zoning stuff, like if, if you're changing zoning, but with regard to the quasi-judicial, judicial process, we'd ask that the applicant. Members of the planning board, members of the public, not to try to sway the commissioners, let them think on their own, and they're going to deliberate before the public. So that it's completely transparent, which I think is what everybody wants, but we want everybody to have a fair shot at it, so we don't want the applicant contacting and trying to do some backroom deal. We don't want the neighbors putting pressure on them individually. Obviously, you have first amendment rights, you can do whatever you want with, amongst yourselves, and on social media, whatever you want, but please. Don't do, don't contact the commissioners. It puts them in a very awkward position, and it's unfair, and we don't want to do anything that would make them have to recuse themselves. Because that may be a vote that's beneficial to whatever side you're on. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, next up was the consideration of the text amendment to add townhouses as special use in the R-the three residential zoning district.
Mayor Baker, to. Mayor Baker, I will, uh, would like to make the comment that, uh, according to the background information here, that this, uh, should also be tabled since, uh, we didn't, uh, approve it, either of the, uh. Text amendments, or S U Ps.
All right, I have a second. All in favor? Opposed? All right, so next up, it's consideration of a Drift Day Salon ABC permit. Zach?
Ready or not?
Thank you for waiting. I know it's been a long night.
You're welcome. This is going to be the easiest decision.
We're still conducting business. If you would, please try to be quiet as you leave. Thank you.
This is the easiest decision I'm sure you're going to make all night. My name is Roxanne. I own a drift down the road. And if you've been there, I can tell you that after this meeting, everybody in this town needs our services. But all I want to do is sell specialty beer and wine at the spa and have the occasional event. That's it. Really easy.
You've got a lot of the property. I'm just going to say that.
Thank you. We're still working on it. We still have the whole back area to deal with, but we're getting there.
Okay. Anything you want to add, Zach?
The property is located at 914 W. B. McLean Drive in the B-20 Commercial Zoning District. And this would be a consideration of ABC Local Government Opinion Form.
Okay. All right.
I got one question for the.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this beer to be sold to anyone that wants to walk in and drink a beer? Is it just for your clientele?
That, it will be in our retail area for anyone who comes in. So, if the residents, you know, there's a large population behind us, if they just happen to want to come up and purchase, we would want to sell to them.
Do you guys have any questions? Yeah, sure. Okay, second. Okay, all in favor? All right.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the public hearing on our fiscal year 2223 budget. All right. Hey, we got a, he's going to give a presentation and we'll call you. That way, people know we're talking about.
All right, so we'll just run through real quick because I know the meeting's gone on for a while now. So, the revenues and expenditures are both balanced at $2,850,929. The tax, recommended tax rate remains unchanged at 21.25 cents for every $100 of valuation. And you can see a breakdown of the departmental expenditures there. This budget's a little bit higher than in previous years because it includes the American Rescue Plan Funds. Other than that, this, uh, the budget was posted on the town's website and made available for public reflection and review effective June 1st. And this time, I think we could go into the public hearing on the budget.
All right. Need a motion? Or just go? Okay, all right, so it is opened up and we had Star Hill Golf Course, Mrs. Holtz. I assume. Am I reading the right one? Yeah, sorry. Okay. Come on up.
I was in a hurry when I signed up. It's really more for the, the whole town, not just Star Hill. But I want to congratulate the staff on the successful yard waste pickup. And again, as I have for many years, implore the town to have more than four a year. Now, you have more staff, you have more equipment. I would ask you to consider picking up at least every other month. Thank you.
Thank you. And nobody else speak? So, I will move into the adoption of the fiscal year 22, excuse me, 2022, 2023 budget ordinance. Do I have a motion?
Can we make comments or discussion first, Mayor?
If you'd like, go right ahead.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. This budget's no different than the rest that I've been involved in. It's, uh, it's not the perfect budget, but it is balanced. And that's the main thing, without a tax increase, thanks to all the hard work by staff and five commissioners here. But I want to give one shout out to Chief McKinney. Bill, you've ran a tight ship ever since you've been the chief over there. And I, and I got to applaud you for that. When I first came on the board, we were having budget problems, if you recall. And, and as you took over, we, uh, we cut your staff down to, down one person. And you've dealt with that for four years now. And I want to thank you for, for all your hard work and keeping your budget under control in your department. That's all I've got.
Wait, yeah, we can move. Still, it's good. Okay, do I have a second? Any more discussion? Comments? Hang on, he's getting his microphone back. Hold close. Did you want to say something or are you just getting your mic back? Okay, without any discussion, then all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next up is the boat ramp discussion.
Off too, if you'd like.
Go right ahead.
Once again, being on this board five years, every year we hear the same thing in regard to the boat ramp. It's overcrowded. Uh, I've asked for some numbers and, and have received some numbers. Uh, currently, there are a total of 468 passes issued for that facility, which to me is grossly overcapacity. I managed and at one time owned part of the Bay Shore Boat Ramp. And we had basically 125 to 135 people. And I, I think for that type of facility, which mirrors this one on Manatee, that's pretty much in line. The question is, uh, do we want to cap it? And, and my opinion is I think we need to cap it. We had 269 Cape Codderette residents purchase passes to, to use that boat ramp. And I just want to run this by the, the board to see what they're, whether it's receptive to them or not. I would like to recommend capping it at 285, which still, in my mind, is severely overcapacity, and give the citizens of Cape Codderette the first two weeks to purchase their pass. And if it's not reached capacity, then we allow the Bow Pelletier Cedar Point Swansboro outside residents a chance to purchase passes after the two weeks to fill the capacity at 285. That would certainly give all the residents a pass to, at 269. That said, to obtain, to, to continue with the same amount of revenue that we're accustomed to or spoiled by, whatever you want to call it, we would have to increase the, um, the fees for those passes. And Bay Shore, we pay $250. And we're happy to get it. We're happy to get use of a boat ramp. So, I guess if we raised to 225, we would maintain the current revenue at $225 per pass based on 285 passes. We could maintain that current revenue and lower the capacity on the facility because it cannot, it cannot function with, with, uh, properly with 468 boats. It's, it's just unbelievable. This should have been handled a long time ago. It's came up time after time after time, but no one has presented anything. And, and I've struggled with this. And, and having managed a boat ramp and owned one that mirrors that one, I think that's about as good as, as we can get and, and have it available for everyone. That's just my opinion.
Would that proposal meet the legalities of the grant that we used to do some stuff down at the boat ramp?
Yeah, I think the, um, I'll weigh in. I would just caution with restricting access to other municipalities. When we got the grant to dredge that channel, the name of the project was the Manatee Boat Ramp Channel Dredging Project. And it was to be available for all, for everybody to utilize. So, I would just be cautious about limiting it too much. I could see if you went up across the board proportionally, you know, residents, residents of surrounding towns and beyond, if you went up $50 on each or something, I could see that. But if you designed your structure in a way that it limits outside access from other municipalities, we could get it into, uh, or getting outside of the scope of what that grant entailed and what we indicated to the granting authority. So, I would just urge caution on that. But, um, you know, that would just be my take on it. Also, there are some other aspects of limiting access to public trust waters that should be considered as well. And I could probably weigh in on that at some more's.
I would just, you know, any, anytime you're limiting, you are limiting. But if there's a valid reason such as capacity issues or lack of parking so that there's safety issues or whatever, I think that that's something the board could consider as a policymaking decision as to whether you believe there's a capacity issue, as Commissioner Martin has said. And if he does, well, this would, as I understand the proposal, Commissioner Martin is that you're going to have 285 slots open and then first come, first served for the residents. And then after that, then there'd be first come, first served for anybody else who wanted to apply.
That, that, that's correct. And, and, um, I, I would like to, 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 to touch on what Zach commented. Zach, that dredging was for the waters. There was no mention of the ramp facility. That ramp facility is paid for by the citizens of Cape Codderette. That said, all of our parks at the end of the streets are off limits to anyone that doesn't reside in Cape Codderette. Okay? This is the only system that I could think of that wouldn't, as, as, as attorney alluded to, would not prevent anyone from joining. It just sets a standard, a capacity, just like this building has. This building has a capacity. I don't see any difference in that in the boat ramp.
Did we enter into a contract and we have accepted that money?
With the grant?
With the grant.
We definitely accepted the grant. And I, we have not re, Zach, have you researched the conditions of the grant?
I think we did, this, several weeks back. So, yeah, we did have a contract in place.
So, my follow-on question would be, by doing what Commissioner Martin has proposed, does that violate any of the conditions within that contract?
I, I'll need to review that. And frankly, what I would like to do is, if we're concerned with that issue, is to contact the granting agency. I always say, you know, it's not better to just do it and then ask for forgiveness. If you're going to do it, maybe read the contract documents and confirm that they don't have a different reading of those. That's, that's what you're concerned.
Could we approve it tonight, additional of that review?
Sure.
Because I, I, I agree, the, the ramp is way overcapacity. In fact, I went down there Memorial Day and there were trucks and boats on both sides of the road. I mean, it was a serious issue. So, I, I would, uh, I would support this model if it is within the confines of whatever contractual obligation we as a town are bound to. That's how I feel.
I would support that also. And I, I agree with you. We need to, whatever, whatever. You do need to give citizens of the town the first option. And I, we not discussed doing that last year, opened up the town citizens for.
We did it exit for two weeks.
Yeah. But there, even by doing that, you don't reach, you have 269. Doesn't leave a lot of room, but it does leave the fact that it's not a school.
And you may actually get less people if you go up on the price. So, yes, sir. So, there, there may be more rent for non-residents.
That's what I'm liking on the bill.
Did you have a number for outside residences? How, how, because you're talking going up over 100% for town residents.
Well, I would.
Do the same amount of the worst doubling the same percentage?
I would let, I, I, I didn't get that far. I did and I didn't. I did have a discussion with the attorney today. I, I, and he and I came to the conclusion to basically leave that as is.
I think that the, the proposal that, we, we discussed it earlier. Where I understood it is that we're just going to come up with a set number. And Commissioner Martin wanted to make sure that the revenue remained the same. That's what you guys were typically receiving. So, if we did that and then just charged everybody the same price, then, I mean, basically, you do whatever the revenue is divided by 285 and that, that would be your number. But of course, that, that's whatever you guys would like to do on that. I do agree with Zach that if you're going to, um, change the, the price for residents versus non-residents, that you do it proportionally. You don't charge non-residents.
That sounds.
I don't like residents having to bear the brunt of the.
No, and I, and I agree. That's why I said, so, you know, discussion on that, on that. I didn't get that far.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
The capacity was my main issue.
So, so if, if, if what we're saying is the 285 cap first two weeks, 225 for Cape Codderette residents, and then increasing proportionally to non-residents, I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
That, that, that sounds good to me also. Which, which will more than enough be enough to maintain the revenue that we have enjoyed?
Right. So, for staff's clarification, you're saying 225 for the residents. If they fill up all 285 slots, that gets you to the same revenue. But if they fill up 250 slots and then you have 35 extra, then you're actually going to exceed revenue because the non-residents were paying it proportionally more.
That was the plan.
Okay, yes, sir. All right, I understand it.
Yes.
We usually start selling them, like we're going to probably start selling them tomorrow. So, I kind of need some direction on which way to go. Those 285 will be gone probably in a minute. And we need some direction because we send out letters and stuff like that.
I think you're going to get direction in about 10 minutes. I mean, I think, uh, do you need any more than us just?
I just need the pricing.
Yeah, so can we?
Okay, when we make a motion, we'll, we'll have the pricing and whatnot.
What is the?
Have you done the math?
I, I have not.
That, that's why I was going to ask. You done the math on out of town proportionate to, to 225 citizens? Zach?
Uh, the town, the first pass is $100. And then they can add up the four and those additional passes are 25 each.
Out of town.
We have to get some.
We changed that the last discussion.
It's one, one of them, Cedar Point, oh, and Pelletier's 250. And I think the second pass is 50. And then everybody else is 350. And I think there's that one.
I'm sorry, I think we discussed this before. I think it should be similar for the pass. Because each pass is 400. It's going to be down there.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know, that's, that's my.
Yeah, I agree. We should have to do calculus.
Don, in, in answer to what your, your, your comment was, in Bay Shore, that's what we do there. I mean, we count every boat as a pass. If you don't do that, then you, then you still got a.
Right.
Yeah.
That's right. So, we're going to alter that as well. So, the one pass, otherwise the same price per pass, straight across the board, going forward. Let me write this down.
Which is 225, right, Mayor?
Equals 225. That's what I think everybody consensus was on.
Yeah.
And.
Replacement cost.
Like a new trailer or something like that.
How do you?
They're not taking an additional slot. They're just replacing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's why, how do you, how do you prove that? Because I ran into that a lot too. Those people try to get around it, but.
Yeah, I think they would have to bring at least a portion of the old one or majority of the sticker back. Then, and then, I think the price of that, I'm not really concerned about because they've already paid. They're just switching over.
We have a.
Okay, I, I'd say that's fair, $25.
Well, replacement pass.
For replacement. For replacement.
Sure, go ahead.
So if a residence of Cape Carteret has a boat pass, it's two twenty-five, correct? And they have a second boat, some cost another two twenty-five for that pass, is that what we say? Personally, living here all my life, I think that's a little bit kind of tough right there for residents. Because some of these are on fixed income people here living in this town. We don't need to penalize these people for that. They're citizens of this town. Does it need to be twenty-five dollars? No, I think they need to be more than that. But hit them another two twenty-five, that's tough for these people's fixed incomes. We need to consider that before we move forward. I am for increasing the money for the out-of-towners as well, but increasing the second boat for these town residents. But moving forward, I think that's hitting the residents a little too hard on that. Need to kind of back up a little bit.
Is that attached to the whole number or attached to the license plate?
It's the whole.
It's a bit to the home, yeah.
Was it the boat for the truck?
Just for the, the board's edification, we have to assure that the project is open for use by the public on an equal basis with limited restrictions if on public property. So there's a couple of issues there. Is, are the restrictions we're imposing limited? Is that reasonable? And then also, this is not public property in the sense that we don't own the property, but it is leased by us. So what I would suggest is if, if you do the conditional approval like we talked about before, it would just be conditioned on the granting agency's allowance of this proposal.
Yeah, in concurrence with our.
That's correct, that's correct.
So if we, we agree to this and we go forth tonight and they say, no, you can't do that, then we just have to give some money back?
Right, and you do regroup as a, on, on this whole issue.
Exactly, yeah, right.
And we can send out that email tomorrow and hopefully get a response very quickly, so. But I, I do think that that would be the, the best route forward just to make sure that we don't do anything where the granting agency later on says, give us our money back. All right, that's, that's the goal.
I agree.
Okay.
So do we have a, is there a motion on the, no?
Well, let's, let's make sure we agree on everything first. So first thing was the, the one pass, otherwise each pass is for in-town, two twenty-five. Out of town is, I'm sorry, what was the out-of-town current? Two fifty current for out-of-town?
That's, that's neighboring municipal.
For the neighbors.
Three fifty.
All right, so for the neighbors, if we went up. Three fifty? If we went proportionally, that would be. So it's two fifty now. That's one hundred. Three twelve, it'll be five hundred, roughly five hundred dollars. Or if we look at, we're raising it a hundred twenty-five over just doing, adding a hundred twenty-five to each. Which would you rather do?
I, I would like to see, and again, I think, you know, it was twenty-five dollars for additional pass for the resident, correct? I mean. Say no more than, no more than a hundred.
You got, yeah, you want to say something?
I was just wondering if we could add one, that would make two hundred for residents, three fifty for surrounding, four, four fifty for front door. And then if it weren't more than one, it could be a hundred, everything a hundred more. And instead of the twenty-five for.
That, that leaves it short on the revenue. Residents maintain close, so we don't have to come back to a compliment or something.
But there'd be something we need to kind of like.
But I understand what you're talking about. Some people have two boats in their yard.
And they live on, a lot of these folks now are living on fixed incomes in Cape Carteret. And I, I don't probably should be penalizing these folks. So we need to be, I think we need to be careful what we do for that.
So the reason that we're worried about capacity is that each one of these permits is a truck and a trailer sitting down there that'll go ramp, right? So I'm not sure exactly how the rule is written, but there is no reason why if I take my jet ski down there or if I take my boat down there, I'm not operating under the same pass long as I'm not taking up two spots with two vehicles. So I think that's where, at least in my mind, where we need to get to. And I'm not sure how we get there from where we are right now. But if I take a truck and take a boat down there and I pay for my permit, I feel like I'm well within my rights. And if I grab a different boat, that's mine, and go down there, I'm only, I'm still going to take up the spot for my boat and not my truck. So if I want to take both of my boats down there with my boat, two of my cars, now that's two permits. But if I'm only taking them in one spot, and in one part of the spot and one boat, I don't see why there's a. So I don't know if that means we need to, it needs to be a truck sticker or what, but.
It is. I think that'd make it easy for the police too. Chief has pointed at you. I mean, because you would have to, it's hard for you guys to get out and see that the. Yeah.
Making like one of those handicap things.
There would need to be a here to that vehicle because if you're hanging something everywhere in there, then it'll be trained people.
Yeah.
Now you're a.
Like a sticker, window sticker.
Sell them on Facebook.
I would, I would argue that there's probably more people with multiple water vehicles than they're trying to get down there than there are multiple trucks to pull those with.
Can we just agree that probably very, very small amount of time that one family is going to put all their bucks at one time and just out of a washing, just issue one. Just lower the, the, the extra boat fees. Like you, what are you advocating as far as extra boat? It's a twenty-five thing, right?
It is. But if we just do the vehicle that's going to be hauling it, whatever they haul down is what they get. That's what it costs.
Yeah.
Which is not a bad idea.
I purchase a pass for my vehicle. I might hope, our, all hope, I give a boat every day, doesn't matter. It's one day each day, I think, one boat down.
There ought to be a tax on the boats already if I happen to have their yard anyway.
That sounds perfect.
Yes, I, I agree.
It's mine. Oh, I don't know, can I?
And then in that case, I would still say it should be the same amount for each.
Yeah. I agree.
I'm buying too, that, I'm basically, yeah, if you take two boats down there, we're two different.
Are you okay with that, Jeff?
Yeah, it is, it is me.
If you have two boats, I'm just going to be bringing one at a time.
Agreed, that's right. I thought you recognized our landlord real quick. She's got something to say. So I think the simplest solution to that would be that if you are a, if you have a recognized handicap sticker or, or, you know, you rate that, then we should use a hang tag in those specific cases so that they may move to, you know, be able to move it to the vehicle that they need to. So we would have fixed it to everybody else's car. But if you are a, if you rate handicap accessibility, then we can give you a, a decal that can be moved, basically a hang tag for your rearview mirror so that he can use, so his buddy can put his boat in or whatever if he pays for that.
We do have some hang tags, I guess, before when they used to do it. And when we have like hurricanes or people that need to have a boat service that live in town, we will get that.
So if we do the sticker on the truck, we'd have to get new stickers though, right? Or would we put them on the bumpers? I just mean as far as how, I mean, I'm thinking, I probably prefer to see them fixing the window, but they sticker on the back. So you couldn't put it on the inside. That's, that's, that's what I'm thinking about is how would we do the sticker for this year? Here again, I know we're trying to do something to be quick about it, but.
We ready for a motion?
I think we need a motion on this one. Yeah, just because it has budgetary impacts.
Right.
Or potentially.
Uh, well, I think we haven't figured out.
Yeah, we still got some issues.
Yeah, we still haven't figured out what we're going to do with the pass thing. So are we ready for a motion? Because we talked about where we're going to put the pass, but I don't think we figured that out yet. On, okay.
Yeah, but are, are we ready to do that? That's what I'm saying is where are we going to? They're, they're designed to go on the outside. So if we're going to do that, then we'll have to, we'll have to dictate to the people where we want to sit on the bumpers, I guess, for this year. And then next year we can buy the new stickers that would be just like our entry, re-entries that will go on the inside of the glass. Yes, chief, please.
I'll say if you stick them on the inside windshield, I'll, I'll bet that you could still see.
Not on my truck.
There's, there's.
They're not, they're not the, the kind of.
Response.
I'll tell you how Naxet does it. The Naxet beach pass, drop pass puts it on the board.
This is, this, in my, in my experience working with passes, that's beach passes, we had to put them on the inside of the glass at the bottom corner of inspection or the top. Because if you put them on the outside, we have people stealing those passes, taking them off and putting them on other vehicles, and that's not a very smart. We need to be on the inside of that windshield for the police department to be able to see them readily available to them from the runway. So if they're only sticking on the outside, we don't need. Yeah, that's on the outside.
Can I go ahead and keep this?
Hundred dollars please.
Remember, I want number one this year.
Well, we might have to do just like chief said, might have to figure something out just for this year.
There is another situation that you're, you have one boat at your house with a resident, two tow vehicles, your wife, you use it. My girlfriend, and use that vehicle. Vehicle.
Well, we just come up, this year come up with a, an agreement on the second or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, because I don't think we're going to.
So we, there's so many, there's so many variables to this as we speak. Probably revisit it later on.
What was the numbers we agreed on?
Well, we didn't agree on the, the out-of-town, that was the, that's the, right. The out-of-town neighbors. Went up portionally, like I say, would be five hundred dollars for the closest neighbor. I'm sorry. Five sixty-two, fifty to be exact. Or do we want to round them out? I would just round it out to five hundred.
Would we decide for the neighbors?
That would be the five hundred. Yes, like Cedar Point.
Out of areas like the other.
Out of area would be, what is, what is out of area now? It'd be seven hundred?
Yeah, we're starting to get up there.
We still haven't agreed on the second or third one, but because I have as far as that's correct. If you're on, since she's already got this too.
Somebody said a hundred dollars. So that's doubling, that would be fair, I guess, because we're doubling, we're doubling the regular, so fifty dollars? All right, so to reiterate, two twenty-five will be the in-town pass. Fifty dollars would be for the additional vehicle for in-town. We're going to round up the five hundred for our ne, for our neighbors. And surrounding area would, seven fifty? Yeah, only, only, we could say only in-town residents can have the extra stickers.
Mayor, I, I live in town here, of course, but seven fifty will, will be a little bit steep, hey? A little bit steep on that number?
Well, that's, that's for people that are, that are coming from outside of Bogue, Pelletier and Cedar Point, correct? So that'd be. Okay. All right, so let me just go over that one more time. So two twenty-five for in-town, fifty dollars for an extra for in-town. Uh, five hundred dollars for surrounding towns and then seven fifty for those that are outliers. Yeah, what's the consensus on that? I would just say in-town, limited to in-town. In-town limited to two.
Is that why agreement to seven fifty out-town? Outside?
Well, it's, it's not over that.
How many of this out of the area, not, not talking Bogue, Cedar Point, surrounding, but further out?
And we were charged.
Yep, so two hundred eighty-five total passes.
Two weeks, uh.
Two weeks head start for, yes, for the town like we did before. Then after that, we open it up. And then that would be five hundred for the out-of-town, our neighbors, and then seven fifty for those who are. Outlying. Is that right?
Don't make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Just to make sure this is all contingent.
And on the granting agency approving?
Yes.
Right.
If they, they, they send the negative, then we go back.
We got to go back and draw them work.
Yes, sir.
Maybe just clarify, if, if they say no on it, board want to wait till the July meeting to revisit or? Because obviously.
Well, yeah, we'll have to wait till July.
So they don't sell any passes till July then? Would you just extend all the ones that are in effect or how would you want to approach that?
It's expired in the June, so we have to start selling on that.
How long's it gonna take to get, how long's it gonna take to get agency concurrence?
Uh, it's probably two or three days.
Probably get something.
We not sell any until then?
And then maybe if they come back with the negative, then we can let the board know, and if you feel that need to have a special meeting.
That's, that's, that's what I was gonna say.
What if they don't come back at all?
They'll, they'll respond, yeah. I think they'll respond to us.
And that's the motion.
I mean, but the only problem you have with the motion is the seven fifty.
Yes, that's Steve. I think we're gonna lose some revenue on that. We don't have twenty-three people.
I don't think we're gonna lose it. I think we're gonna gain revenue because we're still talking about, uh, potential a hundred, probably a hundred and fifty-something people.
Yeah.
We won't have any problems selling those passes and maintaining the revenue. Sixty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
That's total. Still owe you. I'll second the motion. Right.
What were you gonna say?
Just thinking about, you know, these two eighty-five lights that are off in this first two weeks. If they did, they were pretty close, we'd be at sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-four, two fifty.
Yeah.
Two four, one twenty-five.
We predict, projected sixty-five, so we're within a thousand bucks. Maybe very much.
Yeah, so that's.
My mind concerning for the citizens of the town here, first of all, make sure they're taken care of before we move outward. So I'm, I'm ready to move forward.
All right, so you seconded the motion?
I second the motion.
Motion on floor.
All right, call in favor? Okay. Yes. Yes, and if they don't have a problem, then it goes into effect. And if they do, then we'll drop it, we'll have a meeting.
We make sure that email goes out as soon as possible?
All right, next up, consideration of budget amendment. Twenty twenty-one dot twenty twenty-two dot zero.
Somebody cooking supper or what?
Need a waffle house. Okay, here.
He could have told me that before. Right, may help, but anyway. Um, this is just a very basic end of year budget amendment, just to make sure that everything is covered when the auditor comes in. We had three thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars that we've received from insurance proceeds throughout the year. What I've done is just applied those. Um, one thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars was applied to professional fees because we were over in that area. We will also have to pull some more through our fund balance, but I'll go through this first. And then one thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars also was applied to our police department fuel line because obviously with the price of fuel, we went over quite a lot, quite a bit on that line. So the three hundred and, three thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars was applied to offset those two expense lines. Now I have professional fees, ten thousand dollars that went to account. Because we were over, most of that went from our U D O and the land use, what we had to pay for those. Um, one thousand two hundred dollars was for the election for the governing board. I can't tell you exactly why they charged us that much more for the past election, but they did. And then one thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars was asked, put towards the boat ramp lease. We had an increase for the boat ramp this year. So our total amount of the budget amendment is fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars of that. Get back over to my actual budget amendment. Of that, you can see the total expenditures was fifteen eight seventy-eight. If you go down, the revenues were fifteen eight seventy-eight. Glad to ask any, answer any questions if you. Kind of cut and dry. The three thousand dollars was an offset. The balance came from our fund balance. That was twelve thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars of our fund balance. Any questions about why, of what I did? So what we're asking the board to do is to consider approving budget amendment twenty twenty-one dot twenty twenty-two dot ten.
I'll make a motion to approve budget amendment twenty twenty-one dot twenty twenty-two dot ten. Second. All in favor? Thank you, Sandy, appreciate it. Next up is consideration of Mr. Frank Rush's employment contract. Those of you in the audience don't know, uh, our town manager is leaving. Zach's last day is Friday, and so you're looking at your contract as an interim with Frank Rush is who we're talking. Is coming in as the town manager.
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Rush's employment contract as written.
All in favor? I'm sorry. The amounts. Sure, it's all, it's all public. All right, next up is the discussion of the Sutton Drive stormwater. At our budget meeting, Ms. Holt, she brought us a. Paper, just trying to find it. About knocking the swell down. There it is. Which y'all came in at a cost of thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, which you'd like to be reimbursed for that, if I remember the meetings that everybody had. I guess I need to note, Sandy, thank you for being here, by the way, because I did have a question for you is where do you stand on your improvements? I know you had a six-week window, and that's the issue with the board. I think the issue is that we don't have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, this attorney, attorney to Sam's. Are we, is, are we allowed as a town? Now, and this is not just for this project, but as you know, we have like fourteen stormwater engineering projects that we voted to apply funds to last, last month. Are we as a town allowed to apply taxpayer funds to, to do this particular project or any of them, for that matter, on private property? Or, or does having an easement help?
Right, yeah, so you have to show it's for the public benefit and not for the private individual. So typically, you know, my recommendation is that we spend money on property we own or property that we're legally obligated to maintain, which is the easement or right of way or things of that nature. This, this one, I, I think what, the, the issue here is it's on private property. But I guess there's an argument, it's for the public benefit in total. Um, but I, I do think without having some sort of easement or ability to justify that expenditure becomes a little bit problematic.
I, I tend to agree, and that's why I want a clarification on that tonight, going forward, not for just this project, but it appears a lot of other projects will be run in the same scenario. Uh, that said, Zach, if we approve reimbursement, what have you, to the golf course, would you, can we use A R P funds for, for that?
Something, before we were to do that, I'd recommend reaching out to the folks at the, with the Department of Treasury just to make sure that we're within the bounds on that. And I know Sandy sent through a number of those webinars, so she might be able to weigh in a little bit on that, but I think we definitely want to get that in writing from them as to whether or not that's permissible to use. I'd just hate for that to be called back if it was, if it were not.
And lastly, just one other legal issue is that, you know, typically we bid out projects, right? So.
Correct, or. Right, that, that's.
Right, and so, and, and with these A A R P funds, their, their requirements, say you meet certain bidding requirements. So i, if we're just giving money to some individual who's bid it out, or some entity that's already bid it out on their own, that, that could be problematic.
Okay, let me, let, let me just ask this, let me just present this scenario. Just say we obtain an easement from the golf course. We apply the thirteen thousand out of reserve funds. If we get approval from A R P, can we reimburse our reserve funds from A R P? We cannot, be sure. No, I'm not asking, I'm saying if we spend, obviously, we're gonna, if we agree to this, we're gonna have to spend money out of reserve funds for it because it's not budgeted. Can we put the money back in to reimburse from the A R P funds? Even if they say, and as, as Ms. Holt has mentioned, the grass is growing. I'm trying to find a solution where we can get moving on this project to help those people. Uh, so. How soon can we obtain an easement?
Soon as you give us a description.
You have to get a surveyor to go out there and survey out the easement.
A public comment period for.
That's the thing, is, is, is trying to do this in this, this timeframe is almost impossible.
Well, you've had a.
And so the thing is, 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 I, I'm not sure how the golf course is, is down the road after we get this. You know, would you be willing to do this again outside of this, this window, which is obviously just, it's just not feasible to do?
Well, let me emphasize that this does not benefit the golf course one iota. I don't know where the town of Cape Carteret got the idea that Star Hill is responsible for the drainage for thirty or forty acres of Star Hill neighborhood. We're not, we're not responsible. But because this board, and I'm just saying how I feel, because this board did not even have the tools to examine the problem of Sutton Court in Sutton Drive, the golf course commissioned the surveying of the elevations to establish what the problem was, so that Freshwater and Jonathan.
Some engineering on that.
Yes. Yes, he did. Yes, he did, and Star Hill commissioned extensive surveying, more than even Freshwater had done, which we shared with Freshwater and Jonathan McDaniel to establish the problem. And the two of them came up with a Band-Aid solution, just a Band-Aid, which Star Hill said, okay, we'll go in, cut the sod down, cut this hill down, find a place for the dirt, put the sod back. And by the way, folks, please make up your minds because we're gonna be shut down for six weeks. And that was at the last board meeting. Sure you do. Of course it is. But, but the thing is, part of that is not just moving sod and cutting the hill down and trucking the dirt off and putting the sod back. Part of it is for a bill we haven't even received for all that surveying, which I am told is gonna be ten thousand dollars. Is Star Hill supposed to eat that? I don't think so. So whatever y'all want to do, however long you want to plan and, and, and engineer and come up with things, just tell us. Tell us where you want the easement, which benefits Star Hill, not one iota. You're benefiting the people that live in that neighborhood, and Star Hill is allowing you to run it through our land, hopefully with the least disruption. Thank you.
Well, I guess we just need to, to go ahead and try to do the easement. Because number one, we gotta have these, so I guess we need to look into whatever, uh, needs to happen with that. And, because I know we, we done, we tried to do this last year. But the issue with the easement last year, I believe, was, was, there was a request or restriction that a easement was not going to be given to the town unless we did something about these Florida water systems or something. So is that gonna be another issue if we go forward again? Are you gonna have restrictions like that requested on the easement? Right, but I'm saying we can't, we can't dictate that to people, those water systems. We, we can't be the water police.
But that's, that's not one of the conditions, it's just common sense. No, sir, that's not a condition.
Okay. We're trying really hard, really hard.
We would just need, we'll need a gauging surveyor to go out there and define the easement both our benefit and their benefit, so we have a legal easement out there and then.
So we'd need a motion to sue. This is, we're talking about the easement.
Yes, sir, but please don't reinvent the wheel. We've got ten thousand dollars worth of surveying to be used, but we don't want to just give it away.
So I think you, a surveyor probably can gather the meets and balance description for proposed easement from the survey data that you already have. But I do think a surveyor probably need to look at that to develop where that meets and balance description is. Um, if there's any information we should know in terms of with, um, specific restrictions or anything like that, it would be good to know that so that Brett can include those in the easement that would be proposed, I guess, in the July meeting.
Okay.
So, I mean, ideally, if you wanted to share that, I mean, a town surveyor could do it if, you know.
Well, we're getting the easement, actually, I think we're gonna pay for anything involved with that easement request. I do too, but I know there's, there again, we're dealing with a lot of legalities that, that baffle my mind sometimes, especially tonight, with the procedures and all. But, uh, we want to, there again, we're protecting town's interest and yours, but I'll make sure we do this correct. I agree, I agree. I had to survey my property twice, just, just to do my addition because the first one wasn't quite good enough, so I had to have it done twice. So, hey, I know. So, anyway, do we need a motion?
Right, then, the consensus of the board is to pursue an easement. What we'll do is, Zach, we can, to her point, we can check with the surveyor that she's used to see if you, if using that surveyor will get things done quickly. I know Mr. McDaniel is very busy, a lot of surveyors are, so if we're trying to get this done by July, we're gonna have to find a surveyor that can get us a description very quickly. But I, I, I have been in touch with, um, or I can be in touch with Ms. Holt or your attorney, and we can work out the draft easements. Of course, I will draft it and then for your review or for your attorney's review. That's gonna have the description.
Okay. Okay. All righty. Good. All right, next up is the planning board chairperson updates. This is all. All right, next up is the Planning Board Chairperson Updates, this is all.
Okay, so at the last couple of planning board meetings, uh, we've discussed adding the category for mixed use to accommodate for medium density residential development. And, uh, we all, and that is something that needed to come to the board. We also discussed, uh, adjusting the special use permit process to include the planning board. Last month, I had, uh, said that the planning board was being stymied from, uh, from being able to be part of that process, which we would, we would, could be very helpful with. And last month, I let you guys know that it was time sensitive. And the reason that these things are time sensitive is because special use projects, special use permits are going to start coming hard and fast. And we have got to wrap our heads around all of these things at one time. We can't just fix one thing at a time. That's, that's for you guys to decide one at a time. The planning board has to look at the big picture and make, make all of this work. So you guys have an opportunity to get information and, and vote on it in a timely manner. We went ahead and crafted some, uh, some language. We put together the text amendment change. We provided that to the, uh, the town staff on, on May sixteenth, asking for it to be put on the agenda with the intention that it would make it to this agenda and you guys could vote on it for that text change to let, allow us to get into the special use project, uh, the special use process. The reason that's important is it gives us the ability to get in early with these projects and start crafting these conditions to make these projects work for the town and work for the developer. Right, there's a hundred different ways that we could do that. If we are writing the language in the UDO, we have the ability to make this stuff work. But in order to do that, we've got to have that text change. So I want to know what it's going to take to start getting text changes from the planning board to the Board of Commissioners for a vote. Now, I understand that, that there's got to be a public hearing on some of this stuff. You know, I really do. In this case, I really expected it to happen this time, and I'm disappointed that it didn't because it would have been extremely helpful for tonight's meeting. This, uh, the issue with townhouses from the, the, not the June meeting, but the May meeting, was the first we kind of got hit with this townhouse stuff. When we realized, we didn't know that it was an actual project, we would, it was just kind of conceptual. And at the time, we realized.
On, on the townhome issue, just because of the quasi judicial nature of it, I think.
This is, this is about, this is about the special use project. The special use process, next change. Not, doesn't have anything to do with the individual.
Okay, as long, as long as your comments are general in nature and not.
It's not a special use. I'm just, I was just giving you an example.
Okay, I, I just don't want there to be any issue.
No, no. Um, the, um, so we, the, in the May meeting, we realized that we didn't have enough information. The board wasn't smart enough, we didn't have the language. We went back and defined, uh, some, uh, some language so that we could talk to each other in the meeting, all on the same sheet of music. I tasked the individual board members to go ahead and do some research, which they did. And we came back and we were really ready to, to move forward with this. We, uh, and, and I am still asking that we, we kind of get that to you guys. I, I need to understand, how do we get these, this text change to you so we can amend the, uh, the UDO to allow the planning board to be part of the process in order to develop conditions to present to the planning board, I mean, to the Board of Commissioners? Right now, we are stymied and all we can offer is a, uh, uh, letter of consistency and, or inconsistency for that matter. One of the things that we recommended at this, at this last meeting was that for clarification, we add the term detached to the existing table of permitted use so that, uh, we could differentiate, uh, single family dwellings. And then, as we go further, then develop that, that next category, that next zoning category that we, uh, that we were directed to do. The land use tells us clearly that we need to do that, and kept saying we needed to do that. And, uh, and that's something that we need to, we need to start, start moving on that. We're going to, we, our, our goal is to add that, that term detached in anticipation of creating language and parameters for attached homes so we can delineate between, uh, between the two. So that we are, and we are prepared to, uh, to start, to start getting busy on these, uh, this medium density zoning district. Uh, I was very proud that four members of the planning board attended that two-day CPNI workshop. Uh, we gained a lot of good information. And one of the most important things that we learned is the importance to us going forward of developing a master plan. Uh, I don't know if that's something the planning board will do or if another committee will be formed, but, uh, but that will help us, uh, move forward. Again, I want to say that if the planning board is, uh, it is to be any help to you, we, we, we need to get your help to enable us to, to do that. Okay, that's all. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have anybody for the regular public comments? Doing all staff updates?
Can I speak, I need to sign off.
What you got to say?
There's maybe difference on putting a cap on the boat, answers if somebody doesn't park there. They just take their boat, launch it.
Yes, because you're using the facility, I would think.
I think that would be a concern. And also, I think Yopon needs a traffic light to take the traffic away from these two intersections. You think the town would support something like that?
You talking about on the, on twenty-four?
To take all the traffic that comes out of these two streets? Because our, our little subdivision would use the Yopon string more if we had a traffic light. Because a lot of the older cars come down to these two traffic lights to go out because we're not going to, you know, cross through three lanes because these people don't use their blinkers.
Yeah, that, that'd be a DOT issue, and I doubt for just one street coming out, they would, they would go along. For one, for one, kind of, if it was an intersection, otherwise a road coming across, you probably have a better look at it. As much as we went through just trying to get a turn signal, uh, down here, you know, off Taylor and Ocean. But it doesn't hurt to ask. All right, staff updates.
Public Works is about to wrap up their yard degree pickup. So I think it'll be fifteen loads as of tomorrow. They got Holly Lane to knock out, so they're almost through with that. Got it done in five days, so might have been a record, uh, record pickup time. Want to thank the members of the CPNI group who came down to Cape Carteret and just fit in the two-day workshop. That was a really productive conversation, um, and I'm excited to see what comes out of their recommendations. They'll prepare a report based on their findings from the workshop. And hopefully that'll be something midsummer that they come back and present that report. But I felt like there was a lot of meaningful conversations that went on, and I thought that was really a beneficial workshop and something, uh, I think would be really good for the town, um, to see what comes out of that. Also want to thank everybody who came out and attended that from the community. I thought it was a really great, uh, really great workshop, so. Also want to thank Starbucks and Cape Carteret who donated, uh, the coffee and, uh, refreshments and, uh, muffins for the, uh, the event. We didn't have a free muffins being consumed picture or coffee cups or anything, but Heather with the, uh, coffee dispenser worked out for the purposes of the meeting. She's probably going to talk about coffee with the cop. I'll yield to you.
Also, uh, we've had some interest in, uh, also, and I spoke with, uh, Commissioner Waters, but these pamphlets have arrived, and I know there's probably not too many people listening right now, but we are going to have, uh, our leadership meeting in two days. Beginning with his own leaders, and they'll in turn, uh, get with our street monitors. And then we'll be getting these out to people. We've had good response. We actually have about twenty-some people signed up now, so that's good. We're making progress. But again, you can go to our website, to the town's website, and sign up. And it's on, when you get, uh, these in your hands, it shows you how to go onboard and sign up also. So we're, we're excited about how that's, we're on. That's pretty much it. We had our, uh, first responder meeting this morning and, uh, finally got everything wrapped up for how we're going to handle traffic, uh, on, uh, July the third. So, uh, of course, this is a trial and error basis. It's going to be first time for Cape Carteret, so it's going to be a learning experience for all agencies. And we do appreciate the agencies that are coming onboard to assist with that event.
We'll see you Thursday morning. That's a beautiful store, if you haven't been inside it yet. Had a meeting there last week, very nicely done.
Quickly run through the rest of these. So, uh, spring paving project started today over on Yopon. So, um, you can see the different areas shown there on the map on the right. So they've started on Yopon, that's complete. I'm not sure which the next street is going to be, if they're going to stick an old Cape Carteret. They probably will because their equipment is over this far. So weather permitting, hopefully they'll get all that knocked out in the next week or two. I'm excited, it's always good to see fresh asphalt going down. Seeing that, um, and there's Yopon Drive right there, so that's looking good and, uh, much better than it was pre-paving. Um, and as Chief mentioned, uh, really excited, um, for this upcoming fireworks event. It's going to be on July, Sunday, July third, starts at six PM. And fireworks will take place at nine PM. Probably what I'm most excited about is the flyover. So that's at seven thirty PM. Wanted to see a flyover now for five years, so I might just make the drive back to, to come see the flyover, so. And I think it'll be a great event, um, great partnership between all the towns in Western Carteret County. I want to thank Mac Daddy's for hosting and Emerald Isle Realty for being the title sponsor. So, um, a really great community effort, and, uh, and I think hopefully this will be the first year of many that this, uh, this event is held. Mention the, uh, skid steers come in, um, for the vegetative waste recycling program. So, um, hopefully we can start diverting a portion of the vegetative waste stream over to recycled mulch, and then we can use that in our parks and trails throughout town. So excited to see the skid steer is finally here, so that's good news. And once we can show some performance on that grant, we can request reimbursement. We actually got a one-year extension, so we're good through next June. So gives us some time to demonstrate the effectiveness of the program. And shout out to the Pub Works Department, they've been, uh, did a great job of getting the, uh, community garden started there off the hill lane. So still wanting to see if there's some interest in the community of folks stepping up adopting a bed and planting out there. So that's something maybe for a future meeting to talk a little bit more through that process of how to set that up and kind of work through a way for folks to reserve a bed and all that. But, um, excited to see that get off the ground, and, uh, I think that'll be something neat if that can continue to grow. Also have the Crystal Coast Watermelon Festival, that'll be on July night. So make sure you mark your calendars for that, that'll be the second annual event for that. And also have, uh, some good news that came in. Always a good way to kick off my final week here in Cape Carteret. We got selected for our flood mitigation design project from North Carolina Emergency Management. So they've granted us two hundred thousand dollars. That can be used for engineering, surveying, and design work at all of the flooding hotspot locations throughout Cape Carteret. I think that, uh, this should get us really close to having, to being able to get everything to a shovel-ready status. And I imagine if there's some leftover, there might be some opportunity for some negotiation on using that for actual, uh, construction of some of these features. So, um, really excited to see that come to fruition, I think that's a good sign. We do have a lot of pending grant applications that are in in addition to this, including one point six million dollars that was submitted through the BRIC program. Um, and then we've also put in for phase three of the Resilient Coastal Communities Program. So hopefully this is a good sign of more grant awards to come. But, uh, really excited to see this, uh, come to fruition. This is going to make a huge difference in being able to tackle some of these areas throughout the town. So, um, I think that'll be really good to see that move forward. And then, uh, finally, it's, uh, you know, my last Board of Commissioners meeting here in Cape Carteret, my last week, last day, it'll be this Friday. And I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners and the mayor, the past and present, uh, for supporting me in this role. You know, it's been a great experience working here for the town of Cape Carteret. It's, uh, you know, for the past five years, we've really accomplished so much as a town and moved this community forward. You know, we face challenges in stride, and I, I think we've really made a lot of good progress. So, you know, looking back, I'm really proud of what we've accomplished, um, optimistic about the future. We have a tremendous staff here in Cape Carteret that I know will continue to move the town forward and the great Board of Commissioners in there. So, um, just want to thank you all for your support over the past five years and want to thank the community for y'all's support as well. And, uh, you know, I'm going to visit Cape Carteret, I'm sure I'll be coming down twenty times for, for surfing trips up the beach because we'll be able to stay away from the water for too long, but thank you all and, uh.
Sir, all right, we'll start with Commissioner Reports with, uh, Commissioner Martin.
Well, Zach, it's the end of the road and, uh, I know Don, Don's the last sitting commissioner that, that headed up a department as a commissioner before we even got a town administrator. So Don, I'm sure can see the, the difference that, that, that our form of government and, and you have made in this town. And I've always told you, if you survive Cape Carteret, the rest of your career is going to be a cakewalk. And I mean that, and I think you've understood that, I understand that. Thanks for everything you've done for our town, Zach. You've been a blessing, a breath of fresh air. Uh, I can't think of anyone else that could have done what you've done. Oh, thank you. But I'm not finished, I got a gripe about one more thing. Once again, I'm upset about the paving, the way it was divvied out. Star Hill got twenty-five hundred and eighty-two feet. Cape Carteret got seventeen fifty-four. Bay Shore got zero. I hope next time that we can, uh, do a little bit better and spread the wealth to all the three major neighborhoods, especially when the ARP funds is, is used. Again, Zach, thanks so much, good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, Zach, man, I appreciate all the work you've done for the town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Waters? Please use the microphone, sir.
Zach, I just want to say congratulations on moving forward in your career. I do wish you very best of luck in what you do in the years to come. Thank you for the work you have done here in the town of Cape Carteret. I thank you, and the town citizens, thank you as well.
Thank you.
And I'm going to echo what's been said three times over. I want to thank you, Zach, I've enjoyed it, appreciate everything you've done for the town, trail, this multitude of tasks. I wish you best of luck, uh, I'm sure you'll do well wherever you go. Don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, um, say sort of the same thing, but yeah, Zach, it's been a short time, but I really appreciate it. Definitely brought me up to speed, so appreciate that. And, um, yeah, good luck, man.
And I have some things I'm working on, but for, because it's late, I'll bring them up next month. Hopefully have more information about it, but, uh, I have a gripe too, Zach. You told me you would stay until my term was up. So, but no, really, I can't, I can't do anything but offer, you know, you the best in your future. And just one thing about you that always sticks out in my mind is, is when your vocabulary, the biggest word you use a lot is "we", and that means a lot to me because when you're talking about the town and, and things you're doing here, you're using the word "we" because it affects us. You don't talk about "I" and "me", which I know politicians love to use that term. But, but that's something that always endears me to use, the fact you, you did look out for what was best for the town, but with nothing of your own at heart at all, and that's, that's very commendable. Not just in your job, but as a human being, sir. I have nothing but the utmost respect for you, I wish you nothing but the best. And, uh, if anything else, I'd love to, uh, we're going to have to go into a closed session. And thank you for sticking it out, guys. You were my heroes, all of y'all, for being here to see it, but we got to go into a closed session. You're welcome to stick around, we're not going to do any business after that, probably. But if I was you, I would leave, but don't let me tell you what to do. But we're getting ready, I need to have a. But we're getting ready, I need to have a motion to go into a closed session. Second, all in favor, let's hit the bathroom and then we'll do that. Hopefully, we'll take it in a minute.